Cindy, we're lost without her.
Doesn't even look it.
I know.
Everybody's got a mic.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order tonight's meeting of the Township of Bernard, Zoning Board of Adjustment. The first item on the agenda is the flag salute, so if you can stand by stand.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirement of the open public meeting law, notice of this meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Bernard's was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building, Collier Lane, Baskin Ridge, New Jersey. It was also mailed to the Bernardsville News, Whippany, New Jersey, or the Corrier News in Bridgewater, New Jersey, and it was also filed with the township clerk, all on January ninth of this year, and it was mailed electronically to all those who had requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Bernard's Township Board of Adjustment. There will be no new cases heard after ten o'clock tonight, and there will be no new testimony heard after ten thirty tonight. Ms. Kiefer, for the last time, can you do a roll call for us?
Certainly. Chairwoman Juniors.
Here.
Dr. Argwall.
Yes.
Ms. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Herrera.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Ms. Pardichi.
Here.
Ms. Pakhtar.
Here.
Ms. Silver has indicated she is unable to attend this evening. Ms. Trapp.
Here.
Mr. Sodieski.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Schley.
Here.
And for the record, Ms. Kiefer is present. Madam Chair, you have a quorum. You may proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to excuse the absence of Ms. Silver, who let us know that she could not make it.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, let me just get that down. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes, which is five A. That was from the regular session of April ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. They had been circulated in advance at this meeting. Sure everybody had a chance to look through them. Are there any comments or suggestions or motions to approve as drafted?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as of April ninth, as drafted.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Pakhtar.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May seventh, as drafted.
Okay.
Well, we need to do a voice vote on four nine.
Different.
Okay. All right. And I'm, Dr. Do people eligible for this would be Ms. Bowman, Ms. Pakhtar, Ms. Trapp, and Chairwoman Juniors. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those who aren't eligible, obviously, abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the approval of minutes for our May seventh regular session meeting. Are there comments or suggestions on that or motions to approve as drafted?
I'll make a motion to approve as drafted.
Thank you, Ms. Pakhtar.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Uh, Dr. Argwall and, well, Ms. Silver. He is the only one that is ineligible to vote this evening on these minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Dr. Argwall will be abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one resolution tonight that I would like to read into the record, if I could. This is a resolution honoring Cindy Kiefer for her dedicated service for, to Bernard's Township, whereas the Board of Adjustment of Bernard's Township desires to acknowledge the many years of service of devoted service given to this board and its predecessors by Cynthia Kiefer. Whereas Cynthia, Cynthia Kiefer began serving as the temporary interim secretary to both the planning board and the Board of Adjustment in January two thousand and seventeen, stepping in during a period of transition in December of two thousand and sixteen. And whereas she was officially appointed as the full-time planning board and Board of Adjustment Secretary on March seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, bringing organization efficiency and an unprecedented approach to her responsibilities. And whereas during her eight years of service in Bernard's, Cynthia has handled over two hundred and fifty Board of Adjustment applications and over fifty planning board applications, and we're not going to mention how many meetings. And all the applications with diligence and precision, ensuring consistency and adherence to proper procedures. And whereas her qualifications include a Bachelor of Arts in Communications and U.S. History from Rutgers College, Rutgers University, as well as certifications from the Rutgers Center for Government Services in Planning Board, Zoning Board Secretary and zoning official training. And whereas Cynthia's previous experience includes a service as a land use assistant in the city of Summit from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and seventeen, where she functioned as Planning Board Secretary and Administrative Assistant to the Board of Adjustment and as Secretary for the Planning Board and Board of Adjustment for the Township of Long Hill from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and sixteen. And whereas her professionalism, meticulous attention to detail, and commitment to excellence has made her an invaluable asset, and her contributions will be very difficult to replace. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Adjustment of Bernard's Township on this fourth day of June, two thousand and twenty-five, that the Board formally recognize Cynthia Kiefer for her diligent and distinguished public service with this board and its predecessors, and for her untiring dedication to the residents of this town of Bernard's. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion?
Oh, do we have to motion that? Okay.
I would like to make a motion to adjutant resolution as drafted.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer.
Thank you. I, I'm just speechless. It has been a pleasure, a real pleasure, working with all of you.
You can always come back.
It's been a pleasure having you.
Always come back. Okay. I will make an announcement at this time. For those who are here tonight to hear case six B, which is ZB two five zero zero nine, Nicole Rosa, that case will not be heard tonight. So if you're here to hear that case or make a comment or ask questions about it, that will be delayed to another evening.
Yeah, is, is anyone here for that application, the applicants?
Oh, you're here?
Yeah, you guys want to step?
You want to come up?
I'll just let you know what's going on.
Sure.
So, um, the municipal landing slot requires that you guys have to include in the notice of the hearing, you have to identify the property, like by address, and or block, preferably block a lot, but address. And you guys didn't do that. So for that reason, we can't hear your case tonight. It's just like a legal technicality that prevents us from hearing.
Yeah, the notice has to be valid, and it's invalid for us to hear it. So we're going to need to delay the application. Ms. Kiefer, do you know when we could hear that case? That's the next meeting. Our very next meeting is July.
I'm not even going to be here. We're going on vacation.
Outstanding.
Okay. Ms. Kiefer, will, they have to re-notice anyway.
Yeah, you guys will have to re-notice.
You'll have to.
Yeah. Very sorry. It's just, you know, legally, even if we were to hear your case and approve tonight, it would be.
Invalid.
So maybe.
Do we have an August meeting?
We do.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll figure that out after.
Sorry, folks. Just, it's how the law works.
Okay. Well, we will hear the completeness and public hearing for Petosky, which is ZB two five zero zero eight. Is that applicant here tonight?
Yes, here.
We will hear that one. Want to come up to the mic, please?
Madam Chair, while they're approaching, I'll just point out, uh, these folks did notice properly, so we can't hear their case.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It was, uh, seven certified male owners of property within two hundred feet of the subject property on May thirteenth, and also published in the Bernardsville News on May fifteenth. The content was sufficient. They hit all the legal requirements, so the court has the jurisdiction to hear the case. With that, uh, who do you guys have present? Do three of you testify this evening?
Correct, yes.
All right, so I'm going to need to swear three of you in, along with our two board professionals. If all five of you could please raise your right hands for me. Do all five of you swear or affirm that the testimony you brought provided me the truth, and all truth, and nothing but the truth. So I think I've got it.
I did, yeah.
Great, thank you so much. Madam Chair, if you could just warn?
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
So we understand that you're here to, um, ask about a variance for the pool location, which we do hear a lot of those cases. So, um, the board is familiar with your application, but do you want to, um, take us through your project, so we understand a little bit about it?
Madam Chair, but if we could just have each of you identify yourselves that way.
Sir, I'm Ryan Petosky, homeowner.
Yes, his wife Erica.
Adam Gorga of the GD Group and Consulting Group. I represent, uh, Mr. and Mrs.
Is that with respect to the pool construction?
Uh, as well as the addition that, uh, you know, there was a couple notes in question.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Petosky and Ms. Dartiganis, your address is, uh, sixteen Saint Nicholas Way, Baskin Ridge.
Correct.
And sir, I'm sorry, what? Your name and one time for?
Uh, Adam Gorga of the GD Group.
Did you spell your last name before?
G O R G A.
Okay. And, uh, are you an engineer or are you just a?
Uh, I'm the, I'm the builder as well as the engineer's consultant.
Okay. So you're not a, you're not a P E, you're just a fact witness essentially?
Correct.
Okay, fair enough.
I'll provide testimony, uh, as a little bit of an.
Right, facts, facts, understood.
Yes.
Can we get your business address, please?
Yes, it's two seventy-one, Route forty-six West, Suite G two zero eight, Fairfield, New Jersey, zero seven, zero zero.
Thanks, sir. Sorry, Madam Chair.
That's okay. So do you want to, um, would you like to take us through your project? I'm not sure if, uh, if your witness is going to take us through that project, or do you want us to ask some questions?
Yeah, I'll answer.
Okay. We have a swimming pool construction for a common variance here on the cul-de-sac. The swimming pool does not lie behind the rear of the home. Common one here, we've been here a few times for it. Standard construction, it was a important design fact to be able to see the swimming pool from the kitchen window as well as the great room, um, which is why we chose not to put it a hundred and sixty feet deeper into the backyard. Um, we also built an addition that was a separate permit that is completely closed out. Permit-wise, we have all of our finals. It's complete. Uh, Morris County Soils has also finalized their portion of that, which we would obviously have them back for this portion if granted a variance in the permit.
Okay. So there is a compliant location, but you said, uh, how far was it from the home?
I believe it was, uh, a hundred and ten. I mean, I get a little different on AutoCAD.
But it was over a hundred.
It puts us very close to the wetlands line, which, another design aspect in this project was trying to stay as far away from that line as possible. If you've all seen from the pictures provided, um, it does not look very much like wetlands in this property. The applicant purchased a home like this. They did not do any restorations, um, but it is all one. So we want to stay very far away from that line to avoid any issues with the D E P and stormwater management.
So it's house number twenty-six that it butts our house.
Twenty, twenty-six is the non-compliant lot, right?
Yes. So from where our addition was built, you can't see house twenty-six from my house. So it's just a back piece of land there.
Okay. Um, you mentioned the pictures. Who took the photos that you provided with the application?
Uh, my office.
Your office took them? Do you know when you took them?
Um, the pictures were taken right before the addition, um, the covered patio addition.
Okay. So, um, what we're looking at does not look like the property looks right now?
Um, I would say no. Well, from two of the views, no.
Can you take us through those photos?
Sure.
When did you take them, you said? Approximately, like, calendar-wise?
December.
December.
August.
Twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Must have been a nice day.
No, it was, it was, it's like August or September.
Might have been pre-constructed.
It's, yeah. These are the pictures we used for that. Yes, twenty twenty-four, yes. Looks the same. Besides the addition.
Okay, so top left, we have a side view, which is, uh, posterior of the driveway. Um, as of, more completed today, looks very much the same.
Referring to this photograph?
Yes.
Correct.
Yep, sorry.
That's looking towards lot twenty-eight.
With the playground.
Playground, yeah. That's a view towards lot twenty-eight from the side. Right beneath that is a picture looking straight back to the back of the property. Picture to the bottom right is the picture looking at the house from where the, yeah, two-thirds back in the lot.
When we look at that bottom picture, uh, on the left, where is lot twenty-six?
It's to your right, man.
It's to the right?
Yeah, but it's like way to the right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not visible to them.
Yep. Do we all have a second page of pictures? Okay. So the second page, top left, is again from two-thirds back, looking at the house where the pool would go. The bottom beneath that is where the pool would be, looking to the rear of the yard. And the bottom right is looking at the house from where the pool would be.
So on the left side, there'd be trees, and right side, there's very tiny trees. Is that true? Like, two, three foot?
Uh, no, tiny trees? No, they're fifteen feet tall.
They're twenty feet high. They're evergreens.
Looking at right here, what this tall tree is, there's some small shrubbery here. Isn't that the? What's that?
No, you're right.
No, no, he's looking at this one. He's looking at this one.
The tall first page, bottom.
Oh, yes. They were small. They're fifteen feet tall.
Yeah.
So that picture might have been older.
Well, there's past that tall tree that's standing up, there's smaller shrub, right?
Those are the green giants.
Those are green giants.
Okay. So they're tall, they're small right now.
They were, in that picture, we, you're so far away, there's still nine feet in that picture. Yeah. I mean, when I bought them, they were eight feet, so.
No, I'm just, this is nine foot here, is that? Those three little?
Yes. Yep. And there's a row. There's actually ten of them there. Because the, the neighbor has a chain link fence there that you can't see.
And the, and the house that we see to the right is number, lot number thirty?
Correct. Yes, that's lot number thirty.
Can you describe the screening? Who, who can see your pool, based upon where you're suggesting the pool will be?
Nobody. Only myself. Only our lot. So lot thirty, our neighbor has a pool. There's, uh, those are white pines up there, um, and she also has shrubbery in front of that. And then on the left side of my property, towards lot twenty-eight, there are, um, blue spur trees that are thirty feet tall. And there's one.
Do they go all the way back to the back of your property? Like, where do they stop?
The blue spurses don't go all the way back. They go, um, right to where that twenty-nine is. And then there are large, tall trees there that you can see on the bottom left, bottom right picture. So then you have fifty-foot trees there.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Did you receive a copy of, um, Mr. Schley's, our Township memo?
Yes.
Are you guys willing to comply with, uh, all the recommendations?
Yes, absolutely.
We have no objections.
No objections.
No objections, exactly.
Are you going to have lighting in the pool?
Yes.
Inside the swimming pool?
Inside, not outside.
Uh, we do not have anything proposed. If there are anything proposed, it's going to be the small twelve-volt low path lights.
Directed down.
Facing, facing downwards, yep. Absolutely.
Mr. Schley, is there anything else in your memo, other than facts?
No, it's the, um, applicant agreed to, uh, numbers four through ten.
Yep.
And number three was just, uh, asking for the status and screening.
Item six will be taken care of, uh, non-diatomaceous earth filter. It'll be a cartridge filter, so we'll be able to comply on it, on all items.
Okay. And, um, you, as applicants, agree to utilize the best ma- management practices?
Yes.
For discharge and pool water?
Yes.
Have you spoken to any of your neighbors about this? Are they?
Yes, they are.
Yep.
Did you hear any concerns from them at all?
They, uh, our neighbor in lot twenty-eight asked about a raised, she just wanted to know what kind of water feature we were doing. So it's a very small, just spill over for, she just wanted to see if we were doing anything else.
Total of eighteen inches high.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Yes. Mr. Quinn, um, any particular points you want to cover in your memo? Yeah, I assume you also received a copy of Mr. Quinn's memo?
Yeah, I am too. I, I wasn't sure what the herb's cover was going to be, because there's still two different numbers on the plan.
Uh, what we did was we included the addition, although it's not part of this variance application. Because it was so recent, we did design this as one and then separate the application. So the new, like, the covered patio is included in that number.
In the twenty-seven hundred.
Yes, and that's why it's high. And unfortunately, I can't separate leaders, so.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine. I, I just, that makes sense. I just wanted to do it. Um, so the other thing too, you tell the engineer when he does this, he doesn't have to include the water surface area if he's impound.
Correct.
There's a couple of notes here that he has to address.
Avoid number.
Yeah, avoid ratio, um, S C D, just note that you probably may need to saw a consideration.
Correct.
Other than this particular item, lucky two, the rest of these, we agreed to these reasons, just mostly notes that have to be here.
We find no objection to any of Mr. Quinn's items.
Another stipulation, though?
And did you also receive a copy of the environmental commissions memo?
I think it was April twenty-eighth, I was there.
Yes. Uh, I think it was May nineteenth.
Oh, May nineteenth, my fault.
May nineteenth.
Yes, yeah, May nineteenth.
Yes.
Oh, I'll have the, yeah, I'll be the environmental commission representative here. Okay. Yeah, did you guys review this memo for the environmental commission?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so they offered recommendations, potential conditions. Um, I noted that they wanted you guys to revise the plans to show the drainage area going into seepage pit, uh, employ best management practices during site work, stormwater, stormwater best management practices during site work as part of, part of final regreating, implement best management practices to reserve and protect trees. Any trees being removed?
No.
No, I think so. Uh, make a good faith, best effort to manage stormwater runoff by planting native trees and shrubs where possible, uh, same thing, using native hardwood species. Uh, we talked about the best management practices for discharge of pool water, and, uh, they wanted you to be aware of the potential for underground tank lead, tape, and asbestos. I don't think it's really, seems like a newer house. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, it's built in two thousand.
We did do a sweep when we started the site work for the original excavation and found that was.
Gotcha. Okay, so, uh, we talked about the lot coverage. Um, any, would you guys be willing to comply with all their recommendations?
Yes, absolutely. We find no objection to any of your recommendations.
Thank you. Are there additional questions from the board?
Um, just, the, um, the environmental commission notes that two trees are to be removed. We said that that's incorrect.
Those were removed with, uh, the covered patio permit that was filed in October and completed, uh, when was it complete, guys? March?
March, yeah, end of February, beginning of March.
Those were two six-inch trees that lied in the existing patio. More of a shrub than an actual tree.
Thank you.
Um, are there any questions from the public? You have to come up to the mic, please? And just as, you come up to the mic, please? And just as a reminder, this is, um, questions based upon what we just heard, not comments for against the application. We'll get to that if you have something to say.
Okay. I live on. Name and address, please. Kathleen Devine, and I live at one sixty Smithfield Court.
Is your, um, is your lot located on this map? Can we see it?
It's, it's hidden.
Okay.
It's the bottom, those bottom duplexes are all hidden.
Okay, so, so are you in that row that would be the thirties, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven?
Yeah, yeah, those rows there.
Okay.
It's kind of hidden away.
That's okay.
Okay. Um, my questions?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Um, I'm just concerned about, um, if it rains, any kind of water, if, the way you're digging, if there's going to be any kind of overflow coming towards our properties where we get flooding in our basement, because I was concerned about how you're going to dig and maybe all the, well, rain and everything would come in our direction.
Okay, so your question is about, uh, drainage from their property where the water flows?
Right, right. With all the digging, I'm.
Okay, let's just stick to questions.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's one of the reasons why we're here is because we're trying.
Can, bring to the microphone, sorry.
That's one, one of the reasons we're here for the variance is to try to keep the pool as close to my house as possible to avoid any drainage runoff towards the back rear of my property. Um, that's, yeah, that's why, that's why we're applying for the variance.
So there's no improvement of drainage, but there's no change in drainage, really, because of that?
Uh, I, I'd like to step in here, if you don't mind. We have, uh, seepage pits being installed, uh, as long as we comply with the soil testing, which we will do, um, as well as a perimeter drain. And what a perimeter drain does is the patio, which creates the runoff that you're speaking of. It catches it as soon as the end of the patio, right, right towards the edge. So we have calculated in our stormwater management numbers, uh, the entire patio, as well as the addition, which is a lot of the first comments on these two, uh, recommendations. So we are set on a six-inch an hour storm. So you should have zero increase in runoff.
So better, maybe more simplified way of asking it, none of, there's going to be no additional drainage runoff onto her lot as a result of this project?
Correct.
Understood. Does that answer your question now?
Yes, yes. Suppose there is, after it's built.
If you, um, if you want to make a comment.
Okay.
Right, we have to, right, this period right now is just questions based on the testimony we've heard.
Sure.
These legalese, these guys make us follow here, so.
Okay.
If you have other comments or against the application, we will hear them tonight, okay?
Okay, I was just concerned we're going drainage.
Any other questions based upon what you heard tonight, with the applicants?
I mean, I'm not really understanding fully where you said I should not expect any drainage, I'm not really, the terms that you're using, so I just trust you're, you're giving me the right information, okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Quinn, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, actually, if you're, the way the drainage runs, if you're looking at the housing property, the drainage runs towards the left, doesn't run directly to the back, and you guys know this very well, it runs to the left.
Runs to my neighbor's.
Third, right?
Yes.
Yes.
You see that new line there, that's a stream that intercepts wherever it comes off their property, so any, my feeling is that drywall overflow that you're concerned about, at some point, those drywells do overflow and get bigger storms, I don't see how it's gonna reach your property with the way that the property, do you get runoff from your lot now, do you know?
No, no, no.
Then I doubt you're gonna see any, because the pattern in the backyard is not gonna change.
Okay, I was concerned, because it's gonna be deep holes dug up, so, I wasn't sure if it was gonna start like flowing towards maybe, I'm not sure if my property is lower than theirs, and sometimes when you're lower than theirs, it may come down, so.
I can't speak to that, in terms of how do you relate to theirs, all I can say is, it looks, from what I can see, and I, these maps are large, the drainage runs towards lot thirty, and then hits that stream and just carries away.
That's right.
So, like that.
Okay, cool, thank you. Any other questions for the applicants?
I, I have one, yes, the drainage that you're collecting around the patio, is that being directed back up to the street or just into drywells on the rear of the property?
No, that's staying, that's staying on property.
It is staying on property.
That's staying on property using drywells.
Okay.
Correct.
And you've done perk tests that show that this will work with this property?
Yeah, when we, when we excavate for the, the seepage patch, we'll perform all testing on Mr. Quinn's requirements.
They have it, they're testing it out, and sometimes usually the comment is, and I'm sure the engineer is involved, which I don't know, the perks turn out to be not sufficient, then you'll have to come up with an alternate gravity type of impact. They have it upgraded back to that, but they would have to be designed, I would never see it would go against your request. That's still the thing, alternative design, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Any comments, do you have anything else for us? Any comments from the public for, against this application, this is your time, if you want to say anything that you want to say, we won't cut you off.
I don't know what the future's gonna hap, what's gonna happen in the future, so I am only.
Okay, seeing none, no, no further comments, return it over to the board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can I give us a summary?
Yeah, sure, ma'am, sure.
Thank you.
So it's relatively straightforward, applicants are seeking one variance here, it's with the pool location, we propose a swimming pool would not be to the rear of dwelling on adjacent lot twenty-six, because it's a little southwest, bottom corner of the screen over there, that's the only variance, to my knowledge, they've stipulated to comply with all the comments in Mr. Sly's memo dated May thirtieth, Mr. Quinn's memo, also May thirtieth, and the environmental commissions memo dated May nineteenth, and I didn't pick up anything else during the hearings as far as stipulations or conditions go.
All right.
So that's it.
Terrific, thank you very much. Okay, does anyone want to make any comments or deliberations on this application, or move to make a motion on this application?
I'll jump in.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn.
I think the, I, I drove by the property, and I actually turned my car around in your driveway, so I was able to sort of peek in the back, I did not go up and walk in the back though, I was an honest walker. From, from where I could see, I think that it is very well screened, it is a very long and narrow property, I, I don't see any problem with this application whatsoever, I think it's a beautiful addition to the house, and I think it'll be a beautiful addition to the neighborhood, I see this as a C-two variance, that there's, there's no detriment, there's, there's no, it doesn't affect the intent of the master plan, and in fact, I would say that it, it helps to enhance the neighborhood and the house, and therefore move the benefits of the master plan. So I would be in favor of the project, do you want me just to make a motion?
Yeah.
So I would make a motion to deem the application complete, and to ask our board attorney to draft, or to approve the application, and to ask our board attorney to draft a resolution memorializing the board's decision, should we all agree, and with all of the stipulations in each of the review letters, and, and testified here this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
I'll second that.
A little clumsy, but.
No, I thought, I thought it could be also C-one, C-one and C-two, I agree with you on C-two, C. C-one, just because it's, it's curvy, so, you know, we're gonna have the problem of where to place it, so.
Right, so, so there's, so there's, there's a little hardship in, obviously, if you wanted to comply, it would be further back, it doesn't make any sense, in my opinion, to, to put it back, so in that regard, I, you could look at it as a hardship, so, sure, C-one and C-two.
Okay, Ms. Kiefer?
Dr. Edwall.
Yes.
Ms. Bowman.
Yes.
Ms. Herrera.
Yes.
Mr. Kraus.
Yes.
Ms. Panici.
Yes.
Ms. Paktar.
Yes.
Chairwoman Jairs.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
As we mentioned, we are not hearing case sixty tonight, on the agenda, which will take us to case C, Druckenmiller, which is ZB two-five-zero-zero-seven, I think we're gonna lose Mr. Kraus, Ms. Kiefer, he's recusing himself from this application.
Madam Chair, while everyone's getting set up, I'll just point out for the record, I did read their notice, they did it properly as well, the sent to, under his property with two hundred feet of subject property on May fourteenth, also published in the Berners-Will News on May twenty-second, both more than ten days in advance of tonight's hearing, all the content was sufficient, thus, in my legal opinion, the board has the jurisdiction to hear and decide the case.
Thank you.
My pleasure, I'll let Mr. Zelli do an intro before we start, anybody.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, board professionals, Frederick Zelli, Post-Palak, on behalf of the applicants, this is an application by Bruce and Stephanie Druckenmiller regarding seventeen Beaver Creek Court, it's block four-six oh one, lot eighteen, located in your R-one zone. It's an application for variance relief for a black metal double driveway gate, hinges to masonry entry columns, flanked by masonry walls, running briefly parallel to the gates, then returning toward the street, and meeting vegetative hedges running along the streetscape, with decorative masonry street columns matching the entry columns. All of the proposed columns would have a gray stucco finish with granite caps, the proposed gates would be six feet tall at the hinges, and tapered down to four feet tall at their center meeting point, the entry columns would be seven feet tall, and the masonry walls and decorative street columns would not be more than four feet tall. Variance relief is required for departure from section.
I'm sorry, can you say that last part again, what would not be higher than four feet tall?
The vegetative hedges and the decorative columns within them.
Is that forever, like, not higher than four feet, like?
Well, if the board were inclined to want us to do, I'm sure we could have landscapers take care of that. Variance relief is required for departure from section twenty-one dash sixteen point two A of your ordinance, which limits front yard fences and walls to four feet in height, and which further provides that fences and walls shall be constructed so that at least fifty percent thereof is open, in this case, portions of the proposed gates, as well as their supporting masonry entry columns, would exceed four feet in height, and the masonry walls and lower portions of the gates are solid, as opposed to being fifty percent open. Finally, if the board were to consider that the vegetative hedges would constitute walls, it may also deem them to be less than fifty percent open and requiring relief for that. I have just two witnesses this evening, applicant Bruce Druckenmiller and Kathy Muller, our engineer, and unless anyone has questions for me, I'd ask that they be sworn in.
Sure, get everybody once, two, stand up, so all the professionals, and all four of you swear, officer.
Hello?
There you go, okay, so all four of you swear in front of the testimony, about to provide the truth, the whole truth, the only truth, so I'll be gone.
I will affirm.
Good evening, Mr. Druckenmiller.
Good evening all.
Good evening.
Thank you for hearing our reasonable request.
Just for the record, would you start by stating your name and full address?
I'm Bruce Druckenmiller, live at seventeen Beaver Creek Court, actually Far Hill's address, but it is Berners.
And how long have you lived there?
Approximately five years ago, we bought the house there.
And who is "we", with whom do you reside?
My wife and I, and we still have one daughter at home, the other five have gone.
Your wife would be co-applicant Stephanie, correct?
That's correct, that is correct.
But you're gonna do all the talking, is that the idea?
Okay, I'll try. It's not always that way.
I'm going to show you a packet of photographs that the board has in their possession already, just going to ask you to go one by one, tell the board what each photograph shows, and please confirm that it's still accurate in the way it appears subject to seasonal changes.
Okay, this photograph, which I assume you have.
Can you give us one second?
Okay.
This was in the original.
Looking at this photograph?
That's it, first photograph?
For the record, I took those photographs, all of them in the package shortly before the application was filed, and they are accurate in what I was seeing as I took.
Yeah, this would be a recent photograph, we've been doing a bit of work on the driveway, actually, when we moved in, it needed a lot of help, and we've got to the point where we're ready to do it, and the idea was to redo the whole driveway and also get a, a fence in the front of sorts, and a, and a gate. Want to go to the next picture?
Please.
Next picture, that's the actual entrance to the driveway with the current pillars. I don't know exactly how tall they are, but they're probably five plus with the light. Next picture, also the entrance to the property, very similar.
And is this how they look now, or is it re-landscaped?
This is, the, the re-landscape, these bushes here are, will be changed, I believe you have a drawing of all the landscape bushes that are, are in the plan, that middle tree is one we definitely want to keep, we did get rid of a lot of other bigger trees that were nearing the end of their life, we got a permit and got them gone, not that I really like to see them go, but I've had experience with them before, they're twenty-five years old, and I had another property where Hurricane Sandy took care of them all, so, we've taken them down, and we have a lot more, there's a lot of many, a lot of vegetation going around. This does not show anything new there. Again, the next picture is straight on, on the driveway, going towards the house, shows the tree, and actually, this is probably about two, three weeks ago, because there actually are a lot of plantings, starting from the house, coming back, that are already in place, it's starting to look superb. And the last picture, a different angle of the house, shows the whole house from the other side there.
Is that from the cul-de-sac angle?
That is, yeah, if you're coming from the back end of the cul-de-sac, that would show the house on the left as you're approaching the entrance, the end of the street, the, the entrance to the other road, the T. That looks like all the pictures.
And next, I'm going to hand you two computerated, computer-generated renderings, and ask you to take us through those, tell us what they're depicting, and please confirm that they fairly depict what you're proposing, obviously, they might not be exact, just please confirm that this is generally what you're proposing.
Okay.
Board has these as well, from the more recent submissions.
Okay, you see number one? That is the beautiful design we are, that has been proposed. It shows the columns that are, that's what we're requesting the variance for, they're a little taller than four foot, I believe they're around six, and the gate swoops down, but it is also, I think, around six, the other wall, the other walls are all four, and I believe someone mentioned before about keeping the hedges at four feet, we will, we will plan on keeping them at four feet, we got a good landscaper who likes to keep working as long as we pay him. One of the reasons for this little extra height, my son, I have three, three boys, three girls, one of my sons lives in Warren, about five, six miles away, and he got broken into about a year and a half ago, and they stole two of his vehicles, high-end vehicles, and they were in the house at two AM, from the records, I'm just thankful my son never came downstairs, but these folks were in the house looking for keys, and they got, grabbed the vehicles and went, it's kind of been still a little fear in our family, and that's, I don't know, that's just my reasoning for making sure we have a little height, it kind of gives a psychological and physical barrier to these clowns who, they were, they were floating around, a helicopter was looking for them in, in this area, actually, a year ago, but that's the reason, we wanted just a little height extra, I actually used to live in, also in Berners on Meeker Road, I don't know if you're familiar, one sixteen Meeker, Swan Gate they call it, and we had, I actually went over there today and just measured the gates, just to, because it kind of came to mind that they're actually eight and a half on the pillars, and six and a half on the gate, so, there are such things in Berners, but we're not asking that high.
Bruce, the image that you've shown, let me just see which one you have first, okay, so that shows the gate itself, and then take us to the next one, please?
The next image is just a little shot farther back, showing the house and the, basically what it will look like when it's finished, there'll be room enough, room enough off the road for a car to come in and actually be off the road, and the gates can open. Looks beautiful, what can I say?
So the gates open towards the house or towards the street?
I would think, I actually haven't asked that question myself, but I would think they'd open towards the house, that'd be a no-brainer, if not, I'm making sure.
If they weren't, they are now.
Yeah, yes.
You've already indicated that you would agree, if there were approval, it could be conditioned upon keeping the hedge rows at, at the four-foot maximum.
Yeah, certainly, not a problem.
I have no further questions for Mr. Druckenmiller.
So if the hedges can be four feet, and that makes you feel safe and comfortable, is there any particular reason that the columns can't also be four feet, and the gate going across be four feet, is there a reason that they have to be six feet?
In my view, for what I think, if that matters, I think, not to mention that it only looks better with the little swooping, but I think psychologically, it'll keep these, and the width, width of the hedges at four feet, they'll be wider, I mean, some of these guys are good at the high jump and long jump, but I don't know, I just, I just feel it's a good psychological barrier to prevent people from coming in.
Just to be clear, the only columns that are too high are the ones at the actual.
Yeah, exactly, it's strictly the ones that are holding the gate.
Right, and those are seven feet, not six feet, correct.
But what I'm asking is, if, if you feel comfortable having hedges that are four feet, why would you not feel comfortable to also have the columns? why would you not feel comfortable to also have the columns be four feet and the gate across be four feet? I mean, not even going into the fact that everything is supposed to be fifty percent open. I'm gonna leave that aside for now, but what is the issue with just having everything in compliance as far as the height? Is it purely aesthetics? Because I mean, if it's four feet at some point, I don't think it's gonna deter anyone that just part of the gate happens to be higher. I just don't think it's gonna have that impact.
Yeah, I think psychologically it would, but not to mention it does look better. I don't know, I don't know what you folks think on the looks even, but.
And just to make sure I understand the plan correctly. So it's a four-foot hedge, but then it's also a four-foot wall that leads to the seven-foot pillar and then the swooping gate.
Yeah, the four-foot wall, the four-foot wall and hedge would have some thickness to it. The gate does not.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hence, I think it's better with a little height to it.
Okay.
It said in the description that the wall, that was the big change, was the four-foot wall, that that would be roughly thirty-five feet long. So is that thirty-five feet to each side of the gate, or is it like seventeen and a half and seventeen and a half?
Ms. Muller can address that when she gets the engineering testimony.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact dimensions.
We'll get to that. Are there additional questions for Mr. Druckenmiller? Are there any questions from the public for Mr. Druckenmiller's testimony? Just, just, no, just, no, hang on one second. No, hang on one second. We're gonna do this one at a time. If you have a question based upon what you've heard now, now is the time. It's not the time for comments. We will hear everyone's comments, whether they're for or against the application, but as of right now, we have to be very specific for questions based upon only what we have just heard. Do you have questions?
I have questions.
Okay, come on up. No, no, hang on, one at a time, so.
Thank you.
Your name and address?
My name is Daniel Carey.
Okay, and your address?
And my wife Maria and I live at thirty-two Beaver Creek Court.
Okay, is that pictured on that map for us? Do you see your home, or can you tell us where you are?
Yes, I do. Although, we did not receive a certified mailing regarding this. Fortunately, my neighbor, Dan Sudler, conveyed that he had received a mailing, but I am within two hundred feet. Yes.
Sir, hang on one second.
Yes.
Here with me one more. Any other, just reminded. Anything you say here, right now, it's got a question mark at the end.
Yeah. It has to be a question.
Okay, why did I not receive a certified mailing?
Thank you. We're gonna look into that for you one second. We're gonna check that list for you. Hang on one second.
Thank you.
And which was your address on that map?
As you go in from Mine Brook, on the third house on the left.
Okay, so kind of diagonal from Druckenmiller's, towards the?
Correct.
Okay, we see.
Thirty-two Beaver Creek is on the list.
Yes.
Okay, so you are on the notice list, and we did review it, so do you want to comment on that? So yes, go.
I can't speak to whether or not you received it or not, but I can at least confirm, based on what's been provided, the applicant did send it to you, and they sent it to you on time.
Okay, we did not receive it. I don't know. Did you get a return receipt?
Do you want to address that, how that works?
So we actually don't keep track of it because the statute only requires a receipt.
Okay, so, so.
We may, I just don't know.
Yeah, so frankly, I'm the only one here that knows, the fact is, I did not receive it.
Understood?
Okay.
We're gonna ask questions about the application.
So, so a question. Have you had any break-ins at your home that you're worried about, that this fence would help you?
We haven't had any break-ins yet, but judging on my, on what's around in the area, I just want to be careful. We have beefed up our security and cameras.
Good. It looks like an extremely large driveway. How many cars can you park in that front driveway?
I don't know. We actually have four cars. There's three of us. Occasionally, we have visitors, and you might have more cars in there. And I've seen other occasions with other neighbors have cars along the road beyond.
But don't you think this driveway is far larger than perhaps all the other driveways combined on Beaver Creek Court?
I believe this.
I'm going to object because the variance application has nothing to do with your argument.
I agree, I agree.
So I'm concerned, are you considering mixed use behind this rather large wall?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
My youngest daughter, for the record, is gonna get married this year, but I have six kids, and I love having them back, so I have, I'll have twelve kids eventually, not to mention grandkids, so we enjoy having the rest of them. That's all.
Would you say that the wall going along Beaver Creek Court would take up roughly one-third of our entire street?
I have not calculated that.
Well, looking at the picture, wouldn't you estimate that that's easily one-third of our entire street with a solid wall?
Maybe one-sixth, including the other side.
Would you agree that this is going to completely change the look and feel of our neighborhood?
I don't know what to say. I, if.
Have you considered what it might look like to your neighbors? Given the fact that there's been eleven months' worth of a massive driveway project going on?
Yeah, the driveway project was not my, the timing was not my choice. This could have been done quite quickly, but the winter hit us.
Would you admit it's a massive undertaking so far, even without this wall and gate?
The driveway, the driveway.
It's a question. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I like my neighbors. It's all right.
As long as we're on the other side of the wall, I think.
No, the driveway is the same size.
We heard an objection, so hang on one second, okay?
I'm hearing an objection from your attorney, but I'm hearing not objection from you, sir, so.
The driveway is the same size as it was before.
Okay, before you guys go any further, I just want to remind everybody here. We're here to talk about the proposed columns and the gate and the hedges. The driveway, frankly, is irrelevant to what the board can consider right now, because that was, I'm assuming it was approved by some kind of permit approval at the township level. We're only here for the gate and the, as I just stated, the hedges and the columns.
It's actually slightly smaller than it was before.
What is going to be underneath the vegetative walls?
Underneath the walls?
Yeah, they're solid, are they not?
I believe there'll be some dirt. I don't.
No, underneath, in this rendering.
Sorry, sir, which rendering are you talking about?
Maybe this one?
These fantasy renderings. They're AI-driven.
You're asking a question about this one?
Sir, we got questions.
Question about this one?
How high would the ladder that I'd have to climb to look across and over, give me the vantage point that you generated in this AI image? Twenty-foot ladder?
Four-foot high.
No, but to look over this wall, wouldn't I see the wall from the street?
You could stand there and look over.
If I was Shaquille O'Neal, I'm not. I'm wondering what's underneath this vegetative material? Is that solid? Is it brick? Is it stone?
It's all, it's all shrubs. It's a hedge.
But, so, is this not solid?
No, it's a hedge.
Where does it end?
There's a column every twenty feet approximately.
How many total columns?
Our engineer will go into all of them.
Yeah, the engineer could answer.
That might be a better question for the engineer. You'll have an opportunity to ask those questions.
Okay, okay. I know some of my neighbors have questions as well.
We'll give them an opportunity. Okay, is there anyone else who has questions for Mr. Druckenmiller? Okay.
Mike Henrelong at forty-one Beaver Creek Court.
Where do you live?
Lot twenty on that, on the end of the cul-de-sac there, right, right? Forty-one Beaver Creek Court, correct.
Okay, that's right at the end of the cul-de-sac?
Correct. On the right-hand side is Lot twenty, I think you see.
Yes.
So, question, so again, I'm just learning about the ordinance as well, too, so.
Sir, before you ask, because in Bernard Township, the lists don't give property owners names, so could you just spell your last name for me?
Sure. H-E-N-D-E-R-L-O-N-G. What type of vegetation, I guess, are you gonna put in this fence, which effectively, right, from my understanding, is gonna create a solid wall, right, for people not to look into your property, right? So what's, what type of vegetation? Privet or?
I believe the engineer can answer those. Something the deer won't eat and the bears won't go through. You've had bears, have you?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, bear's gonna get through anything. But, so that's a concern of mine, because if we go and it gets approved, if there's four-foot, so my question is, okay. So my question is, who's gonna monitor the fact that you're gonna keep this at four feet? Is that the town? Or is that, you're just gonna be a good citizen and not have it go to twelve?
Let the board attorney.
Okay, sir, I can speak to that. The applicant did stipulate that they would, as a condition of approval, they would condition this if the report were approved, if that makes any sense. The hedges would have to be maintained at four feet tall. If they were to go up to, let's say, five feet. It would be in violation of the approval. The zoning officer would come out and cite them.
Okay, thank you.
That's the mechanism for it.
Got it.
And they did stipulate to that.
Right, they agreed to keep it at four feet.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Is there another question for Mr. Druckenmiller? Okay, come on up.
Hi. Maria Carey, thirty-two Beaver Creek Court. You're worried about someone breaking in. Everything is four feet except for those two huge pillars that's gonna have a seven, the seven-foot with a tall gate. Why can't someone just go over the four-foot wall or your four-foot hedges? Why then do you need that big, tall pillar with the gate?
I don't, I mean, they could jump over anywhere, but I believe, I believe if it's a higher thing, it's a deterrent.
You're gonna have a massive, massive, four-foot wall with hedges.
Excuse me, can I ask you to come a little closer to the microphone? And you too, Mr. Druckenmiller, sorry, you have to share a microphone, but it's, we're recording it, and it's important that we hear it, so.
So I don't understand. If everything is four-foot, and then you have these tall pillars with lighting and big gates, someone breaking into your house will go around to the four-foot side. So why is all this even necessary?
I don't know. I believe it's, I believe it's a deterrent. That's all I can say. I've mentioned it's a psychological deterrent. I've been around the block a lot and dealt with quite a few people and had some nasty things happen over the years.
And the other thing.
We're just trying to be protective, that's all.
And the other thing is, you know, we have sewer and we have well water.
Yeah.
All your hardscape and all this landscaping, what's it doing to the drainage?
Again, I have to object because it's gonna be on some of the.
Yeah, again, we have to focus the questions on the reason why he's here. We will have a comment period. You have a lot more leeway when you get to the comment period, but for this, for this point, we want to stick to his testimony and questions that are relevant to his specific application.
Okay, well, that's all I have to ask, because if it's four-foot, you don't need the seven-foot.
Thank you very much. Is there another question?
Hello. Hello. My name is Anesu Yagosh, and I live in three Beaver Creek Court. We are neighbors on the left-hand side, so we are the first house on the road from Mine Brook. My question is a bit of a curious one. I'm wondering, is the primary concern car theft that you mentioned, is that the primary concern for what you're building the fence for?
I, it's one of the concerns, I would say.
Do you have other concerns, other than car theft?
Yeah, I mean, we've had people approach the house that we don't need, but.
Okay.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah. Well, I'll address it in the comment section, because we are the first house.
You will have an opportunity then.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
Sorry. Quick question. Hold on. Mr. Press, are you an interested neighbor?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Zelli, I know these.
Do you have any objections? It sounds like Mr. Press is gonna have some.
As a recused neighbor, he has the right.
Thank you.
Carl Kraus, forty Beaver Creek Court.
Okay, where are you on the mount, Mr. Press?
On the end, on the left-hand side cul-de-sac.
Okay.
Just two questions. One is, did you consider anything else besides what you're proposing today? The township has open, you know, fifty percent open fence, and that's typically what I've seen in the township on front yards. Either wood or metal typically.
I have to remind you, it's gonna be.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you consider any other options besides what you're proposing? Possibly a fence that is fifty percent open versus the closed, not fifty percent open, walled rendering that might provide the same safety features that you're looking for?
Yeah, I don't know if it'll have the depth as the.
Mr. Drucken, just a reminder into the mic, please, your answer.
I don't know that it'd have the depth and the, like the hedge and the post, but I'm not looking to create problems for anyone. We're just.
I was just asking, did you look at anything else? Did you?
No, I mean, this is what our designers designed. We feel it looks excellent and, yeah.
The only other question was, is this, do any other neighbors within the eight houses in this cul-de-sac area have front fences in their front yard?
I don't believe they do at this point.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
One last question, I apologize. Do you have garages in your house, and how many?
Four garages.
And do you keep your cars in your garages, typically?
Usually.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there additional questions for Mr. Druckenmiller? Okay, come up to the mic, please.
Good evening.
Your name and address, please.
Donald McCutcheon, Jr., eighteen Beaver Creek, directly across from Mr. Druckenmiller. My question probably isn't for Mr. Druckenmiller, it's probably for the engineer.
Okay, do you want to try it? Otherwise, you will have an opportunity to ask questions.
Sure, it's.
Sir, I'm sorry, before you go any further, you said eighteen Beaver Creek? Can you hear your name one more time?
Donald McCutcheon, Jr. You need, you need that's.
And you would have. Thank you so much.
Excuse me, my voice is.
That's okay. So right into the microphone, please.
My question again is probably for the engineer. It has to do with the decibel level of the gates. Has that been looked into? Because what we've been experiencing is a lot of traffic in the middle of the night, so, and that's fine, we have no problem with that, it's the opening, closing of the gate.
So your question is, how loud will the opening and closing of the gates be? Do you know that?
Yeah, thank you.
If I could answer, I've had gates before, and they're very quiet, but I'll leave that to the engineer.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I have just one question. Can I come back?
Sure.
So I have to say my name again. Anesu Yagosh from three Beaver Creek Court.
Thank you.
Do you know of any car thefts or the number of car thefts that have happened in the area?
I have not calculated them all. I just know there was a episode about, approximately a year ago, that there was helicopters looking for someone who was after vehicles. And I know my son had that, and there was also another one the next week later. He was, he's five miles away, but there's, there have been several. So take care of your cars.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Druckenmiller? Mr. Druckenmiller, have you spoken to any neighbors who we haven't heard from tonight that expressed any concerns, anything other than what we've heard here tonight?
No, I haven't.
Thank you.
Probably should have.
Not required. Mr. Zelli, anything else? Anything else from the board for Mr. Druckenmiller? Okay, thank you. One more. I'm sorry.
I did have a question that was based on one of the questions one of the neighbors asked. Had you considered, like, an open, like, say, a metal fence, and you could put a hedge behind it? So it's not a solid structure?
Yeah, I haven't considered that, but considering it now, I believe it'd have the same effect if there's a hedge behind it, and there's nothing against a hedge, I believe, behind it, correct?
No, I don't believe there is.
So, not much difference. Thank you.
So just on that point, though, we are, we're dealing with columns and hedges in between, so that it's not, as one of the neighbors suspected, it's not a fence that there's hedges built around, which, you know, some people do that.
I'm speaking about the thirty-five feet of stone wall on either side of the gate. That was what I was talking about.
Gotcha, okay.
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 Thank you.
Ask Ms. Muller to come up, please.
Thank you.
Will you have been in front of this board a few times, I would say?
A couple times, handful of times. Good evening.
Your license as a professional engineer is still in good standing this evening?
Yes, it is.
Madam Chair, do you need further?
Yeah, your license is in good standing. We'll accept you as an engineer. Thank you. Nice to see you again.
Would you please take us through the current conditions and then what's been proposed?
Yes. I'm pulling up the plans that submitted to the board dated five, five, twenty-five, consisting of two sheets.
I'm pulling up the plans that's submitted to the board dated 5/5/25, consisting of two sheets. What I have on the screen right now is the cover sheet with the existing conditions. My office actually has a lot of history in the area. We did the original subdivision of Beaver Creek back in 2000. We did the original plot plan for this lot. We've been involved with Mr. Drucker Miller's current projects. If you've heard, the driveway is submitted in the fall of 2024 and got approval from the township. That netted a decrease of 341 square feet. No stormwater or variances were required. So we do have that project reflected as existing conditions. As built will be done when everything is completed. We have the surrounding area of 200 feet marked along Beaver Creek. It's all the R1 residential zone. The property is 3.04 acres, when three acres is required. It's complying, bless you, in all other dimensional requirements for the zone. The front yard setback, all the side yard setbacks, rear yard setback, the coverage is compliant. As your engineer had pointed out, that if we included all the columns, the 34 by 34s at the entrance, the 30 by 30s, when we remove the existing columns that you've seen, it nets out to an increase of 54 or 58 square feet increase. Again, that combined with the prior project ongoing in the front, the project property will always be, has been, and will still be compliant for impervious coverage. That's the existing conditions. I'll move on to the second sheet.
Just for the record, these are the same plans that have been submitted to the board since the beginning, correct?
That's correct, and they're unchanged on the screen. The focus of the application tonight is the hedge row and columns along the front of the property. So what is proposed is 30 by 30-inch columns at a 40-foot-on-center spacing. A length of solid wall flanking the gates with the gates set back. This is dual-purpose. One, so that a car could pull off the road before the gates were to open. And also, as your engineer had stated, it sets them back a little bit to have some perspective. We have the four foots in the front, and we set back the, what proposed, two seven-foot columns. And then the proposed wall, the columns, the vegetation in between the columns is symmetrical. I saw that within the fence and wall detail zoning that I reviewed earlier this afternoon, so that does meet some guidelines from the ordinance. So that's the gist of it. It's, one, two, three, six, eight columns at four feet in height. One, two, three, four, five, six, to the right side, if you're standing in the road looking at it, and two on the left side. It goes to the property lines. The front of the columns and the four-foot hedge is proposed to be 3.5 feet from the property line, which is approximately, I believe, 14 to 15 feet from the curb line. The two pillars, we've talked about the height at seven feet and the attenuated gate that comes down. The applicant desires this design as a visual impediment for vehicles only in the driveway opening. The total width is 20.3 feet in between the two pillars. The pillars are at seven feet to hold up a six-foot gate. A four-foot pillar with a four-foot gate is not, wouldn't be as strong as a seven-foot column with a six-foot gate. And we're talking, the six-foot gate is at the columns, and then it comes down to four in the middle. So again, it was a visual deterrent, as well as a structural component for those two columns. They were all designed by a landscape architect. We incorporated it onto our engineering designs. We looked at the coverage. We looked at the setbacks. We identified the variances. But again, this was all designed by a landscape architect to be aesthetically pleasing.
Can you describe, and you may be getting there, what these columns look like? You know, are they smooth? Do they look like stones?
Per the renderings, and I have one plan here as well.
Which was also submitted to the board, yes.
Right, I have-
You've got a couple of different versions. I just want to make them clear.
Yeah, I have their plan entitled Vehicle Gate Entry Columns Entry Walls.
Yes.
So in the top-left corner, they show a granite veneer. You know, it's not solid. It'll have some marbling to it with a granite cap. And then one last thing I'd like to just clarify. We've been hearing the length of 35-foot wall to the left and to the right along the frontage. The frontage of the property is 325 feet from property to property line along the right-of-way. The 35 feet to the left and to the right of these columns is five feet perpendicular out from the columns. This portion here, five feet towards the right-of-way, towards the road, leaving, it's actually 23 and a half feet that's running parallel, closest to the right-of-way, to either side. So if you were to walk along the top of it, it's 35 feet long, five feet setback at five feet. So those are the dimensions of the length of the wall.
And is that the same on both sides?
Yes, it's designed, it's designed symmetrical.
Okay, so those walls have this square granite veneer that's pictured on the top of that?
Correct.
And the columns are that next picture? So the seven-foot columns, what do they look like? Because in the drawings, they look different, so I don't-
Correct. Those have, appear to have a smoother texture to them.
Okay.
Again, the landscape architect's out of Massachusetts, so I'm relying on their plans.
Do you know what color it is?
It says gray stucco on it.
Yeah, I know what it says, but is that what it is? Is that a suggestion, or is that the plan? Did you pick them out yet?
Would you maybe gray stucco? I'm not sure.
They're depicted as gray stucco, if the board has, you know, they're, to match the granite gray top cap and the texture of the new granite veneer.
Okay, so we think the cap and the pillar will be the same?
Yes.
It looks different in the picture.
Of the columns, the cap and the pier will be the same.
Okay.
So, I again heard that you had this seven-feet gate just as a visual impediment, so-
The top of the, the top of the two columns is seven feet.
Yeah, so the gate, the whole area, the big one, right? So your argument, you gave argument that that's for the visual impediment. But you still have four-foot wall where you could, they could see the cars.
Correct, so I'm going to just refer to this rendering.
Yeah.
The columns are seven feet. The top of the gate's six and comes down to four.
I understood.
Right. The depth, as you've heard, for the depth, rather than hopping over a four-foot fence to the left and to the right, will be vegetated, so it'll be deeper to get over. So this is more of a barrier for the vehicle entry. That's only the 23 feet, or 20.3 feet width of the driveway where that occurs.
And you're familiar with the home, like, you've been out there? Have you seen what everything looks like there?
I've seen it virtually. I've seen all the surveys. We've done the design work for years on it. I've been out there, actually, the prior owner to the right on the corner had a septic problem. So I had taken, I'm familiar with the area.
Okay, and is there any other home in this cul-de-sac, in this area, that has anything even remotely similar to this with columns or pillars or a gate or hedges that are, you know, that don't have the 50%, where basically it's kind of like a fortress? Is there anything else on this block, in this cul-de-sac, that has anything even remotely, remotely similar to this?
Not to my knowledge.
Question I have for you is, what other options, if they wanted to obviously still have a driveway gate, what other options are there, given the width of the driveway? Would you have to do a gate that would fit that width, that could hold that weight?
That's an excellent question. I don't, I'm not prepared to answer it. To have a 10-foot swinging gate, you would need a substantial base to hold that as it swings and move it. I don't have the structural details of alternate gates. You know, do they need to be mounted at six feet high just to be able to have that torque strength that they don't topple over with the weight of a gate as it swings? I do not have that answer. It's a great question, but I don't have the answer.
I was just thinking, considering other material that would be possibly lighter, that would allow you to have a smaller size, but yet still have that-
The arm momentum of the strength of it, I do not have that answer, but great question.
Can I have two questions? Do you know the thickness of that wall?
For the depth of the side flanking wall?
The thickness of that masonry wall now that forms the wing walls.
We have it drawn at a foot and a half.
Why? Because the concern is, there's, I don't know why it went from a four-foot hedge to a foot and a half masonry wall. If there was desire for depth as a barrier, you've removed that now. So what was the thinking in going from a four-foot hedge all the way to now having a foot and a half masonry wall?
So there's, that's actually something I can address. So the original plan was what you're seeing now internally. By the time we got to submission, after conferring with Mr. Schley and taking thoughts in general internally, it was thought that the hedge row would not be considered a wall. Then on further reflection, Mr. Schley understandably thought, after seeing the pictures, I think, realistically, how solid these hedges might be, so we realized we were probably going to have to ask for that variance anyway. So if we were looking for it anyway, then we went back to the original plan. That's, but at that point, you had seen the plan with only the hedges, and then the revelation came afterwards. It's just as simple as that.
Okay, yeah, this was, this was the precedent here, and we went back to the other, okay. The other question I had is the impervious cover. When I made that note, I, you guys have about 400 or 500 square feet, I think.
Correct.
Seventy square feet I calculated was only columns. You've added some now with this masonry wall, so I don't think it's going to bring you close. But you're going to get close, so just make sure you update that on the plan, so that's reflected as well as the columns, so that he has whatever current tally he ends up with. It's clear on the floor.
Will do.
So a hedge is considered a wall?
It could be. Yeah, it's the board. We have to discuss whether we consider a wall or not.
I see people with hedges in terms of their property all over the place, that are like 10 feet long.
We can get to that one. We can go right.
Yeah, it wouldn't necessarily just be, I'm sorry, I'm speaking out there. It would just be the hedge, it's like the entire structure.
Project, entire mass. Can I, can I ask, um, David Schley a question? What is the intent of having a fence that's 50% open?
Well, to promote openness.
Openness.
Air light, circulation.
So that we don't have mass.
Visuals, so you're not, have like tunnel vision driving down the road. That's the general nature of it.
Safety issues having to do with being able to see?
Well, sight distance is at intersections mostly, but also driveways could be a concern.
Could I ask a clarification question? So the flanking wing walls, you said they're one and a half feet?
Deep.
Deep, right.
Correct.
Are the hedges four feet deep too? Or, I'm sorry, how deep are the hedges?
The hedges, we have drafted at four feet.
Like this one?
From the front to the back.
Okay, gotcha.
Like a-
All right, and they're four feet tall and four feet thick.
Right.
Okay, so, okay, just making sure. I understand, thank you. Anything else, Mueller?
That's all I have to present tonight.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board, Mueller?
You said there was a landscape architect that came up with this plan. Do you have the name of that firm?
It's Ivy Studios. They had produced the renderings.
There was a question about the material too, right, the landscape material.
Yeah.
You don't know what they're proposing, do you?
I do not. I would imagine it's, let me see if they have it on here. They have a shrub hedging. I'm not sure if it's a boxwood or something. We did speak to them in preparation of the hearing tonight. What they have, obviously, it's going to be an evergreen hedge. It's not going to be deciduous and lose its leaves. It will be green year-round. And that was also their intention to buffer the fence with some landscaping and, or, I'm sorry, the wall with some landscaping. Ornamental grass is similar to what's been shown in the rendering. Low-growing, always green, won't lose its, you know, they'll flower throughout the year. So that's their intention.
I have a question for, I guess, David. Per this discussion of hedges being a wall, if they were to remove the various columns and just make it one long hedge, would that then take it out of the question of, is this a wall?
Well, I think that's a question for the board.
Yeah, we'll have to discuss that, whether we view it as a wall. And I don't know, Mr. Zelli, whether you're going to include in some of your closing comments whether you have an opinion on whether you think it should be viewed as a wall or not.
My, and Mr. Schley did touch on this, I think, first of all, there's going to be a threshold question for the board to decide whether it cannot be. There is no definition in your ordinance. Mr. Schley actually mentioned that in his report.
He did.
So you're going to be going by dictionary definitions. But, yeah, we certainly believe there's a difference between a solid, for instance, the flanking walls, difference between those and the hedge rows. But the board has to make a threshold question as to whether it falls within the ordinance in the first place, and if so, whether we need relief or not.
Thank you.
I have another question for Mr. Schley. You just put stone piers on either side of your driveway in front of the property. Is that permitted?
The town's longstanding policy has been, you can put a column with a light on it, and it's just a column with a light on it, similar to a lamppost. You can put one on either side of your driveway. Anything extending from it of any nature, whether it's open or not, is going to turn the whole thing into a fence or wall, whatever you want to call it. They're both essentially regulated the same. The policy is, you can have one column, obviously, it can be solid.
Right.
And it's not considered a fence or a wall. It's just treated as, well, a column or a post that we would not regulate in the same way as-
I counted less than seven houses in that neighborhood that had stone piers on either side of their driveway with light fixtures on. But you could have that.
That's the extent of what, as far as one could go, and get a permit for it without getting a variance.
But the height is limited, no, for the column?
The column height, you can put, still put a lamp on top of it.
But it's four feet plus the lamp?
Four feet, yeah.
But what's to stop someone from building a column like that and then later planting a hedge?
It's an enforcement issue, and it would maybe subject to an interpretation. We haven't had, we, the town, that I'm aware, have had a situation where we've actually needed to regulate a pure hedge wherever someone may have planted it as a wall. It just hasn't come up.
Thank you, Schley. Anything else from Mr. Zelli?
Nothing further from Ms. Mueller?
Okay. Does the public have any questions for Ms. Mueller based upon her testimony? Come on up. And your name and address, right into the mic, please.
Hi, Dan Sudler, 29 Beaver Creek Court. I'm directly next door to Mr. and Mrs. Drucker Miller.
Okay, so you're the third house, is it?
That's right, on the right. So question, what are you proposing from the lot edges as far as fencing, columns, hedges, to the back of the lot? So, can I use your mouse?
Yeah.
So from here back, or from here back?
As part of this project, nothing.
Okay, so we're still on the question period, right?
Yes, we are.
So if I, God forbid, or someone wanted to access Mr. Drucker Miller's- Mr. Drunken Miller's home, his cars, whatever, and that person's standing here, how would they do it?
By foot, you could walk around it as proposed. Again, we're here for the columns, the shrubs, and the entry.
Understood.
They can get a fence permit. If it doesn't require a variance, they wouldn't appear in front of this board.
Understood.
What we've presented is what we're asking variances for from the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Additional questions? No, to be sorry?
Carl Cross, forty Beaver Creek Court. Have you done a lot of properties in Berners Township?
Yes.
Um, have you experienced or seen this type of property with a walled off more than fifty percent in Berners Township?
I have not done the applications here. Um, I haven't taken a poll of the, the township.
But you drive through it a lot and you see different properties?
In neighboring towns, yes. We have done this many, many times.
Right, but not in Berners?
I have not presented this variance here.
And, um, what was my third question? If, and maybe this might not be for you, but if someone did break into this property and stole a car and everything was closed like a wall, how would they get out?
That's the deterrent.
No, no, how would they get out though? Would they have to go through this neighbor and this neighbor to get out? If they did break in, steal a car? If they couldn't get out now?
They wouldn't steal the car because the deterrent of not being able to get out.
Well, I'm asking the question if they did steal a car.
They could blast through the gate like.
So the easiest, easiest way to get out, easiest way to go. Apologies. The easiest way to get out would be through the neighbors' properties at this point.
We did not do a vegetation.
Excuse me.
Please be quiet.
One question, one answer.
We didn't survey the vegetation on the adjacent property lines.
Okay. But it's possible that that would be the route that they have to take.
I would not agree with that statement without wa, walking the property.
It's possible, just like anything is possible.
If there's trees there, I, I don't know if the neighbors have a fence either.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Additional questions for Ms. Mueller? Your name and address again?
Daniel Carey, thirty-two Beaver Creek Court. Would you mind, could we scan back to the, the street? I just wanted to count how many, um, okay. So there's one, two, three, four, five, six, then the wall, seven. I'm counting eight, um, of these structures. Is that right?
That's correct.
And what are their dimensions?
Thirty by thirty and thirty inches by thirty inches by four feet high.
Okay, and do we know what they're made out of? I'm assuming they're some sort of mason stone, brick, cinder block?
With a granite veneer.
With the granite veneer. What are the horizontal pieces that the hedges are gonna grow on? I'm assuming there's gotta be some cross pieces between these, I'm gonna call those piers. Would you?
No, they're just gonna be shrubs that are planted like a boxwood that you would see in front of a typical residence.
And no, um, horizontal pieces joining those piers?
No.
So a car could potentially drive right through the hedge then?
I can't answer that in a what-if.
Okay. The, the property right over here, which is Dan Sudler's, I believe has an easy.
Which property are you talking about? The one to the right?
There is a fire department, I believe it's like a Cistern. Is there not?
Sir?
Yes.
What property are you talking about?
Um, right alongside, uh.
On the screen, what side of the paper?
Okay.
To the right, to the bottom of the street. So that's to the east?
I'm sorry, we.
Yes, on the lower right corner, right, right here.
I can't see where you're pointing.
Alright, so the far right property on the corner of the image that's projected there.
The house directly to the east?
Yeah, is Dan Sudler's property. Correct, Dan? And I believe there is a fire department water retention system because there's no fire hydrants on our street. And, um,
Is that a question?
At least, it will be. At least once a year, the fire department comes to check the pressure in there. Have you or your team consulted with the fire department about how this might impact their access to get water to save our houses from burning?
Can I leave it to the board to answer that question? Fire department is consulted automatically as part of the.
Did they receive a mail piece, certified mail? Cause I didn't know, I didn't get mine. The fire department? Cause I know they were listed on there. I was listed too, but I didn't get it.
The fire department is always consulted on every application.
Okay. So, how potentially would a fire hose be brought to protect your clients' themselves' houses over this wall? What, what would they do?
Uh, it's a great question. When, usually when there's gates on any road or a path that may be locked up.
Right.
There's a Knox box that's put there that has fire access within it.
Okay. And so I guess their gate would have that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from the public, Ms. Mueller? Okay, Mr. Zelli? Anything?
I would rather sum up after there's gonna be comments, if there's gonna be comments.
Okay, no further witnesses?
No further witnesses.
Are there any, um, comments on this application from the public? Either for or against?
Just so you know, when you get up, I need to swear to you. So just give away the testimony. Alright, sir. Put your right hand for me. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about the truth, the whole truth, the truth, so we got?
I do.
Name and address one more time.
Daniel Sudler, twenty-nine Beaver Creek Court.
Can you spell your last name for me?
S U D L E R.
Okay. And your comment?
Okay, so, um, I just have a statement I'm gonna read. Before I read it, I just wanna say that I, I like the Drunken Millers. I hate being contentious with my neighbors. They're nice folks, um, and so this is coming on the heels of years of construction, so I think that's why you're getting a little feeling of animosity, but that, that's not the case. So here's my statement. Uh, I'm a resident and property owner at twenty-nine Beaver Creek Court, located in close proximity to the subject property. Um, and I respectfully object to requests based on the following concerns. Number one, negative impact on streetscape and neighborhood aesthetics. The proposed fence, columns, gate, and shrubbery, along with recent large-scale hardscaping, landscaping changes already completed on the property, significantly disrupt the visual continuity and character of our street. The scale and materials proposed are inconsistent with the open, traditional suburban design that divine, that defines our neighborhood, creating a more institutional or commercial appearance in a residential setting. Uh, potential impact on property values is my second. The, the introduction of prominent non-conforming structures like large metal gates, stone columns, privacy hedges may have a negative impact on nearby property values. Many homebuyers are drawn to our neighborhood because of its cohesive streetscape, mature landscaping, and lack of imposing barriers between homes. The installation of these changes would appear out of place, could diminish, could diminish the desirability and marketability of our nearby properties. And the last is, it's out of character with the surrounding homes. The homes on this street share relatively uniformed character with open lawns, modest fencing, if any, uh, and unobstructed driveways. The proposed changes are wholly inconsistent with the established aesthetic and introduce an element that is not reflective of the neighborhood's identity. This change could set a precedent for similar requests, ultimately eroding the cohesive look and feel of our area. Uh, I respectfully request that the board consider these points carefully, deny the variance request, and while I understand and respect each homeowner's right to enhance their property, such change should not come at the expense of the surrounding community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Additional comments on this application? Hang on one second.
You can.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
There you go. He's gonna swear you in.
Oh, yeah. Alright, sir. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about the truth, the whole truth, the truth, so we got?
I do.
Name and address one more time.
Donald McCutcheon, eighteen Beaver Creek. I'm a licensed architect and a licensed land surveyor. My family has lived on this street since two thousand and two. And, uh, I can understand and appreciate the unfortunate incident that occurred with Mr. Drunken Miller's son. Uh, I can tell you that we have not experienced any security incidents on our street. That's not to say something like that is not ever going to happen. But, and for this variance to be approved, it, it seems to me that they need to look at hardship, which, as Mr. Drunken Miller has presented, is a security factor. Let me tell you my experience. My wife is from Seattle, Washington. And in Seattle, Washington, one of the wealthiest men in the world, Bill Gates, lives on a lake. And if any of you have ever seen his house, it's an amazing home. But you can approach it from the lake. And you would not know it's Bill Gates's house, looking at it from the water. Because he introduces design elements, unobtrusive design features that add to the security. And what I am offering to you and to the design team and Mr. Drunken Miller, I'm asking the question, had they fully explored all of the design components that would, uh, appease his concerns over this secure, apparent security issue? Now, the Drunken Millers are very pleasant neighbors. They've done a tremendous amount of work to improve their property. Their, their property is immaculate. And we, we, we're thankful for the added value that they've added to the street. But this solution, I don't think is the right solution to address the hardship or concern that they're trying to address. And that is my only comment, that they need to explore further. And not to interfere with the standards that have been established by this board to have an open streetscape, open streetlines that enhance the, uh, that enhance the beauty of the street. So, that is my only comment, that they explore everything. And I don't think they've fully done that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. No.
Can I say something?
Can?
The board did not establish these standards. We just.
Okay. Continue on comments.
Sure. Uh, Mike Hennerlong from forty-one.
We have to swear.
No, there you go.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony about the truth, the whole truth, the truth, so we got?
I do. Mike Hennerlong, forty-one Beaver Creek Court. So my wife and, and I have lived on, uh, in the house since two thousand and five, so twenty years. Um, we weren't the original owners. Um, but love the neighborhood, the kind of acquaintance of it on larger lots. Um, these houses are not huge. I think the largest house is a Drunken Millers. Um, I think when Bossina built the neighborhood, he wasn't looking for that, you know, Harrigan's look in Mobland series and more of just a kinda openness, uh, in, in the neighborhood and so on. So I could honestly say that I've never had any kinda criminal activity on my property. It's hard to believe because my wife grew up in a large farm in North Carolina and she literally leaves her keys in all of our cars in the driveway with her wallet on the seat, so I, you could feel safe from that perspective because they're stealing our cars. Exactly, okay, whatever, so, it's.
What are you guys driving?
Yeah, exactly. So, so I think, you know, in, in terms of what we were talking about before, and I, I a hundred percent, uh, object to this and, and agree with, with Mr. Sudler's, um, you know, uh, letter. But what, what I really wanna, like, kind of run or jam home here is, is I think that these ordinance are set up to protect the integrity of a neighborhood, right? And it's up to you as board members to, to, um, to, to kinda monitor that and, and, um, you know, at least look out for us. Um, and, and in this, I, I don't see any hardship whatsoever in my mind. It seems to me that this is a, a, a like-to-have, not a have-to-have or from, from protecting cars being stolen. I had two good friends, um, one live on a larger crossroad, probably close to two hundred acres, which high gated lots. Criminals came in, took two cars out of their, their driveways, and again, went through a fence. So I don't think a little shrubbery and so on is gonna actually protect anyone here if, if that's what they wanna do. Another good friend on, on, in the mountain in Burnersville, same deal, fences all around a property. Took two of the cars out of their driveway. Police, actually alarms went off, cops came, cops left, and they still stole the cars out. So the pros are gonna get it, no matter where you are. Um, my mind too, if, if you're really concerned about security, then having a three-acre lot is really not gonna do it if that's, if that was criminals wanna do and come in. So, anyway. Adamantly against it, um, again, it's, it's been there for twenty years, had no criminal activity in our neighborhood. And I think this will really, um, look detrimental, put a detrimental um, look on, on our block when you're, when you're driving into it, so.
Thank you for your comment.
Yep.
Thank you. Additional comments on this application? Okay. See, now I'm gonna close the comment period. Mr. Zelli?
Yeah.
Wait, wait, no, this.
Yeah. You okay, Mr. Zelli, if we let one more comment?
Of course. And this, do you swear or affirm that the testimony about the truth, the whole truth, the truth, so we got?
I do.
Okay, name and address one more time.
Anisee Akosh, three Beaver Creek Court. So, again, we are, um, you know, we are very happy with our friendly neighbors. We moved into three Beaver Creek Court now about four, four and a half years ago. And the reason, we've always been residents in Basking Ridge, in the Hills area. And we really moved to this neighborhood because of the openness, right? We have two young teenage daughters. And, uh, as you can see, none of the houses on the road have fences or anything that precluded us because we didn't think that there was, there was a lot of security and safety in the neighborhood. The neighbors are amazingly friendly. They always stand out, chat, and whenever we see each other. So I think having that community, sense of community would be a little bit precluded if you just have this fence that is kinda blocking your, uh, I think psychological, even psychological, uh, vision here. The other thing that I wanted to say is our driveway is just across their, their property, so if it's really the car theft that's an issue, then the car could probably pull it up on our driveway and get out from our road. We don't have anything, we don't even have columns on our driveway, so I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention as well, that where there's a will, there's always a way, so, yes, I just wanted to leave it at that.
Thank you for your comment.
And I object to the.
Thank you for your comment.
Uh, Daniel Carey, thirty-two Beaver Creek Court.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony about the truth, the whole truth, the truth, so we got?
Yes, I do. Um, I, I just wanted to thank everybody for their time and I, I wanted to, um, thank you for listening to my concerns. And, uh, I wish you and your family well.
Thank you.
Thank you. We, we oppose this project, um, in the strongest terms possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Additional comments? Okay. We're gonna close the comment period for this application. Thank you. Mr. Zelli?
First of all, thank you for everybody coming out. We appreciate your comments. This process doesn't work very well if the neighborhood doesn't participate. So even though the comments are against us, we do thank you for coming out tonight. As we discussed, uh, there is a threshold question here for this application, which is whether shrubbery, uh, as presented constitutes a wall or constitutes a fence. Some comments came up as to, uh, whether just having shrubbery without the, uh, without the decorative columns would change the, uh, change the answer to that question. That's something the board has to decide. Uh, and one thing I would ask you to consider is the other way around, is if we just put the columns up sporadically, um, just for decorative purposes, whether that would change your impression. Because if that in and of itself is fine, uh, and having hedges in themselves is fine, it really doesn't make, in my mind anyway, a logical difference, uh, since we don't have any structure going through the hedges. Uh, you're looking at the same thing. That said, uh, it's, it's a decision that you need to make. Uh, we don't have an ordinance definition to guide us, so we do have to go by definitions, under your ordinance specifically, we have to go by definitions from the dictionary. Uh, what I do wanna point out is in twenty nineteen, in an application for a standalone gate proposed for property at seven Tall Timber Lane, uh, ZB nineteen oh nineteen, the board found the applicants had satisfied their burden of demonstrating the purposes of the MLUL would be advanced by requested deviations, uh, height again in that situation. Uh, whether those benefits would substantially outweigh the detriments. This is, as you know, the C two bulk variance requirement or the flexible C. There were several comments made this evening about whether we have a hardship. This is not a C one application. We're not arguing a hardship, uh, so we can see that there is none, but that is not the burden that we need to sustain today. We need to show you that the benefits of having these walls at the height, uh, and at the level of solidity, if that's the right word, whether that benefit outweighs any detriment to the neighborhood and to the zoning plan. The board noted in its resolution in the twenty nineteen application, the intent of the fence height and construction ordinance is to avoid massing and to preserve. height and construction ordinance is to avoid massing and to preserve the character of the neighborhood. Here, the proposed gates and fences do not extend around the entirety of the property and do not obscure the views of the property. As such, the Board finds that the applicants have demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal, particularly improved aesthetics of the property, substantially outweigh the modest detriment associated therewith. In this case, while the proposed gates and columns are conceivably more elaborate than what was approved in that application, they do share the goal of providing aesthetic improvement to the property. The proposed gates, walls, and hedges will also provide a level of security against car theft, which has unfortunately victimized the members of this family and other families in this neighborhood, in this town, and surrounding towns. Security concerns were recognized and relied upon by the Board in approving other gate height variances in 2017, specifically for 393 Martinsville Road, and 2006, specifically for 147 Liberty Corner Road." As I said, the requested variance would be C2 or flexible C variance. We believe the purposes of the MLUL that would be satisfied with this would be, first, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use and development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. That's purpose A. Second, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques, good civic design and arrangement by installing an attractive new feature on the subject property that will complement other properties in the surrounding neighborhood and thereby enhance the neighborhood as a whole. That's purpose I. And then also, under Home Builders League of South Jersey versus Township of Berlin, 81 NJ 127, 1979, Supreme Court case, "To conserve property values in the neighborhood as a whole, which remains a purpose of the land use regulation even though not specifically delineated in the MLUL. We believe the negative criteria are also satisfied. These variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The proposed gates and columns are certainly in keeping with neighborhood and with similar neighborhoods in Bernard's Township as well as adjacent Par Hills." So we do thank you for hearing us this evening. Again, we thank the neighbors for coming out and we would appreciate a positive vote. I would ask for a specific discussion and decision on the issue as to whether hedges do in fact constitute walls or fences under the ordinance, so we have that of the record.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Selly. Okay. Mr. Sowieski?
Okay. So I will sort this out. Okay. So let's start with variances we know, I think all parties agree are required, right? That's the fence height, the front yard fence height for the gate, which is six feet at its tallest, and for the two columns supporting the gate, which are seven feet each.
Correct.
The third variance, if the Board decides this is applicable to the front yard fence construction, that's the openness requirement, it's required to be more than 50% open. The question, I guess, before the Board is whether or not the proposed improvements constitute a fence that is less or greater than 50% open, right?
Yes.
So before I come back to that, let's go through the conditions, which I don't know if they're stipulated directly, but the comments in Mr. Schleis and Mr. Quinn's memos and the fire metal, well, the fire metal permission and the comments. You guys are stipulating that, any conditions in those memos, Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Great. Gotcha. So a few things I did note just during the hearing that seemed like stipulations to me, the gates would open towards the house.
Yes.
The hedgerows would be kept at a maximum height of four feet tall. Obviously, if they go higher, they'd be subject to zoning enforcement. I think you guys need to revise the plans to add the coverage created by the proposed columns and pillars. Do we reduce evergreen hedges, meaning not deciduous hedges in construction? And this is to your benefit, you want to do this anyway, install a Knox box on the front gate so the fire department can enter. You guys okay?
I don't know. I would leave that up to the fire department. I would buy them.
Okay. If required.
Our department may not want that. I don't, I have no idea.
Gotcha. So if required by fire department. Any objections to those conditions, Mr. Selly?
None.
Okay. Now, let's go back to the fence openness issue. So as I understand it, and I might ask, attempt to jump in here at any point, but the way the ordinance reads, the term fence is not defined, right? So pursuant to Section 21-2 of the ordinance, if something isn't outright defined by the ordinance itself, it refers to the Webster's Dictionary, the third new international version to define certain terms, right? So I'm pulling from Mr. Schleis' memo here, the fence is defined by that dictionary as a, quote, "A barrier intended to prevent escape or intrusion or to mark the boundary," and then also defined as "A structure of posts and boards, wire, pickets, or rails commonly used as an enclosure for a field or yard." So that's the dictionary definition. So the Board must decide whether or not the proposed improvements meet the fence, I suppose, as defined by the dictionary.
Thank you. Okay. I think that's a good place to start. So as he said, there's a variance request for the height in the front yard of the gate columns and the gate, so we know that and that's a given. The second one is fence construction in a front yard that needs to remain 50% open. So I think it would be helpful if we started with some comments or thoughts on whether indeed the hedge suggested constitutes a fence based upon, I guess, the dictionary's definition of fence or our view of this project in particular. Do you want to start, Dr. Agawal, please?
Generally, you know, listen to everything. To me, the priority of the applicant, they're saying, "Security." By putting this thing, it's not going to be addressed. It's primarily aesthetics. Because like, you know, witnesses pointed out, you could go this side, you could go this side, or you could just run through the hedge to steal the car. The cars are still visible through the gate. So aesthetics is the primary concern and I don't see hardship, you know. I see, what do you call it, significant change in the local character of the houses. I'm maybe in the same position that on my street, if somebody were to, you know, change the whole thing, I will have, I'll take some of that, you know. If it does not serve any purpose, everybody has taken the property. So doesn't serve any purpose, then why should we do something so drastic that will change the whole block?
Okay.
That's my comment.
Thank you.
Dr. Agawal?
Thoughts around the fence specifically? You know, would you consider...
Well, you know, the fence, it's visible or not visible, that could be one thing, you know, see through or not. But, you know, if you look at the fence, then, you know, security point of view, it will serve the same purpose like a solid fence, you know. I would still call the hedge a fence because it will serve the purpose of fence.
Okay. You consider it a fence?
Yes, considering it a fence, sir.
Other comments on considering it a fence or not a fence?
Definitely a fence. I think in this context, it's undeniably a fence. The applicant is presenting it to serve as a fence. So if it's the applicant who's telling us, "This is what I want, this to serve as a fence because I think it's difficult for somebody who's stealing a car to get through it," they're telling us it's a fence.
Okay. Other comments?
I would have just one thing to say. If they were just putting a hedge in the front yard, nobody would stop them. You see hedges all around town that people put in the front yard. My house had a hedge when we moved in. The first thing we did was take it down because I didn't like it. But people plant hedges all the time. What makes this a fence are those stone piers in between, which almost defined it as a fence, and the gate and the 35-foot flanking walls on either side of the gate.
Okay.
It's a fence in my mind. The hedge itself alone...
Okay. So you think the hedge would not be a fence, but in this project, the combination is a fence? Other comments?
With those stone piers.
Other comments?
Turns it into a fence, yes.
So I would think the same thing. I'm sorry, did I cut you off? No. I would think the same thing. I think that if, I think if an applicant were to come before us and, actually, an applicant wouldn't have to come before us if they just wanted to plant trees that created a barrier around their entire yard, quite frankly. And that would have benefits because of drainage and environmental impacts and things like that or lack thereof. But in this particular scenario, I agree with Ms. Paktar and with Ms. Herrera that it is being presented as a fence. So in context, it is a fence. And because of the way it's stationed and connected by the columns, that it has become a fence.
Is that accurate, Mr. Schley? If someone wanted to put a solid hedge that was 10 feet tall across the entire front of their property, could they do that without...
Well, they wouldn't need a permit to do it, so they wouldn't actually...
But would there be an interpretation about it?
If, somebody would have to request...
Complain and then there could be a discussion.
And enforce an action.
So, but we don't know.
They'd likely end up here.
Okay.
It's a question asked, but it's...
It hasn't ever been...
I don't remember ever it coming out.
...regulated. Something that's 100% national vegetation. It's regulated.
The news.
Yeah. Well, I think it would be debatable. In my opinion, a solid, thick hedge that went across someone's entire property, I would have to really think about whether that's a fence or not for me personally. But we, that's not in front of us. Is there anyone on the Board that does not think we should consider the fence variance the 50% open? Everyone I've heard so far said this project has the 50%. Is there anyone who doesn't? Nope? Okay. So, all right. So let's go with that. So there are two variances that the Board is looking at, the maximum fence height in the front yard as well as the 50% open if a fence construction in a front yard. Okay. We've heard Dr. Agawal's comments. Other comments on this application that we haven't heard yet or motions?
I would say that number one for the Drunken Millers, I'm sorry, none of us can really understand the impact of somebody stealing our car or breaking into our house. So my apologies to you and your family. I do believe that if the intent here is to create a safety, security issue around your house, I think there are other ways to approach it. And I think there are other ways to solve the problem. And I think that it can be done while in compliance with what our ordinance calls for. I think that this is absolutely not in character with the neighborhood. I did visit the property. Nobody else in the neighborhood has even a fence around their property, I don't think. And this just, the 50% open requirement creates light. It creates a soft visual effect. This is massing and this is just, in my opinion, completely out of character with the neighborhood. So I don't believe that it creates a desirable visual element. I do not think that it enhances the character of the neighborhood. I think it goes against the intent of the zone plan. And I think that it is just, I don't think that you can argue, if you wanted to argue C1, it doesn't fit with the negative criteria. C2, it goes against the negative criteria. So for me, it's completely out of character with the neighborhood. It goes against our zone plan. I would be opposed to the application.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Pedici.
I'm somewhat intimately involved with the master plan for many years. I really feel that one of the bedrocks of the master plan in Bernard's Township is to maintain the characters, the character of our neighborhoods. And all of our neighborhoods have different character and that's why people move to Bernard's Township, because we have such distinctive neighborhoods. And I think that this application, I agree with Ms. Bowman, that this is completely out of character for the neighborhood as it is now and as it has been for many, many years. Many people here were original owners and can, you know, have the history of the neighborhood. So I have an issue that I don't think the negative criteria of being consistent with the zone plan and the master plan has been satisfied. So I would be opposed to the application and granting the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Pedici.
I also have a question about gates. I mean, that is really not 50% open either. Yeah, I think the entire, and I agree as well. I think it's definitely not character.
My summary includes the gates.
With the neighborhood and with what we see here in town.
Yep.
Generally, it's...
I'll add my comments as well. I mean, it's, sometimes it seems like we're not sympathetic. We are sympathetic and we care a lot about safety in the neighborhood for sure. But, you know, overall, our mission number one is to see if what you're asking for, which is not allowed, that's why you're here, and our job is to see if we can help facilitate that without going against the master plan and without hurting the character of the neighborhood. I also did drive by, you know, we review the applications in advance. I wasn't familiar with your block. I did go down your block and I was immediately concerned. It felt that it was extremely out of character for the neighborhood and so I had some challenges. So I was interested to hear the testimony. I agree that, you know, clearly, our job is not to suggest safety suggestions to you, that's your job. You can do whatever you feel is safe. Do we feel that? Do I feel like this fence and gate promotes safety? It's debatable. But that's not really the issue for me. Does it help the neighborhood or hurt the neighborhood visually? I feel that it hurts the neighborhood visually. It's my own personal opinion that it doesn't promote safety, but that's not my decision necessarily to make. It's yours. But is it in character with the neighborhood? And I just don't feel, I just don't feel that it is.
In my mind, it sets this house apart as being very different from the other properties in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Makes it stand out as different.
Okay. Any other comments or would someone like to make a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
So I would deem the application complete and I would make a motion to deny the variance request and to ask our Board Attorney to draft a resolution memorializing the Board's decision under C2, the negative benefits.
Question, question. Do you find that the applicant has met its burden of proof under either C1 or C2?
I do not believe that the applicant has met its burden of proof.
Okay. Under either criteria.
Other, under either criteria.
Right.
I can't speak tonight, apparently.
That's okay. Oh, you got it. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Pedici. Okay. Just to be clear, there's a motion to deny the application, so a yes vote is an agreement to deny the application.
Dr. Agawal?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Ms. Paktar?
Yes.
Ms. Trapp?
Yes.
Chairwoman Janiers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Drunken Miller. Sorry. I know it's not what you wanted to hear, but...
Disappointing, but thank you.
I'm sorry. I thank everyone for the neighborhood for their questions and their comments. It's always helpful and we're always interested to hear.
Thank you all for hearing us.
Thank you.
Do you have a chair?
Yes. Okay. Ms., yes. Ms. Keeper? Ms. Pedici is going to excuse herself, so if we can just note that.
I will, thank you.
For following application. We're going to take a five-minute break, everyone, so if we can come back by 9:45, we have one more case to hear. we have one more case to hear.
You did it. Here it comes.
There it is.
There we go. Okay, are we back, we're ready when you are, Mr. Stein? Are we back on?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So, we are back in attendance, just, we will note for the record that Mr. Kraus has rejoined us, but we did lose Ms. Pedici. But we are still good from a quorum perspective to hear this next case.
Matt Scher, before we get going, so this is the Pedici case, block 5502, lot 14. I just wanted, just a couple of housekeeping things to get started with. I think the board first, the applicants first noticed for this case for the board's April 7th meeting. By my understanding, it was carried to this evening by two voice announcements. So, the board still has the jurisdiction to hear and decide the case because the notice was determined to be effective back on April 7th. I don't believe any testimony was actually taken at that point in time, so I think we're essentially starting fresh here. Just want to check the applicant's counsel. I'm not sure if we have the same exact board members that were here, but you have no objections to?
No objection, as you said, nothing was actually done at the first meeting.
Right, that's what I thought, just wanted to make clear. So, yeah, that's it.
Okay. And just a reminder to the board, we do have new materials that were presented.
Yes.
I think we had several iterations.
And I have presents for you, so there's going to be even more material, new materials.
We were expecting more, so.
Sure, I'll let you have exhibits to get to, but we'll let Mr. Stein get going.
Okay.
For the record, Frederick Zelli Post Pollock, on behalf of the applicants, John and Lindsay Pedici. This is regarding 21 Pittney Court, block 5502, lot 14. It's located in your RC4 residential cluster zone, God bless you.
Thank you.
At the first hearing, Mr. Begg appeared, requested adjournment so that he could file opposition. He did submit documentation to the board and to us, and we have refined our, reengineered a little bit accordingly to address his and his engineers' concerns. And the reason I'm bringing that up now is because Mr. Begg is here and has patiently waited for us to start the hearing and has advised me that he is no longer objecting, he's satisfied with the changes that we made to the engineering. So, I promised him I'd try to get him out of here if I could do that. So, he'd like to address the board briefly, and then I'll go into my opening.
Okay, it's up to the board's discretion.
Have a quick time checking.
Yeah, so my concerns, Gregory Begg, 15 Pittney Court, do I need to be sworn in?
Just to be safe, go in there for the first time around. Okay, so you swear or affirm the testimony, you're about to provide the truth, the whole truth, tell me what the truth is, what have you got?
I do.
Okay. May I ask one more time?
Sorry? Gregory Begg, B-E-G-G, 15 Pittney Court.
15 Pittney.
Can you remind us where you live?
So, facing the home onto the-
Is your lot number up there?
Yeah, it's 15.
15?
Lot 15.
Coincidentally, 15 is the address and 15 is the lot.
Okay, so you're immediately to the left of the property.
Looking at it that way, from the street, looking at the front of the homes on to the right.
Yes, makes sense.
Correct. So, my concern was about drainage, water issues and such that presently exist and then, as I thought, would be exacerbated by their initial proposals. There have been several revisions to their proposals, and as I've seen them so far, at least to the site plan, I hired an engineer to make some recommendations, and they've adopted those recommendations, so with that respect, I don't have an objection to their application.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Technically, yes, I think we should allow for public questioning.
That's fair, yes. Are there any questions based upon the comments that we just heard? We don't see any. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Good night.
You're dismissed.
All right, just to be clear, so the applicant will be constructing everything in accordance with what Mr. Beggs, engineer, recommended?
We'll be constructing everything in accordance with our engineering plan, which was taking his comments, his engineers' comments into account.
Understood, thank you.
It's a little bit different, at least. We have a floor area, not floor area ratio, thanks to our Supreme Court's acknowledgement. So, this is an application for bulk variances for three things: excessive impervious coverage, excessive floor area not-floor area ratio in a single-family residence, and having a swimming pool in front of the rear line of adjacent homes. The unique about this one is we have two different homes that we violate that on, and by the way, they violate us on both sides, too. Subject property is part of the Prince Edward Point section of the township. It was developed in the late 1980s. It's in your RC4 residential cluster zone. Most of the homes in the neighborhood, when initially constructed, were of similar size and structure. Various roof designs, exterior materials, other architectural features were implemented to achieve variety and diversity and curb appearance, but the basic design and size of the homes were similar. The lots' sizes in the neighborhood, however, vary significantly, and similarly, the lot widths, which is pertinent to your floor area calculations, vary significantly as well. This disparity in lot sizes and lot widths imposes hardship upon the owners of certain lots, including the applicants, as they're unable to expand their homes in the same fashion as can certain of their neighbors without requiring variance relief from previous coverage and/or floor area, even though they have similar homes. Since the original filing in this application, the applicants have made substantial changes to the site plan, including replacement of existing swimming pool with a larger reoriented and relocated swimming pool, but also including removal of a portion of the driveway to reduce impervious coverage. Existing lot coverage is 23.09%, all of which existed when the applicants purchased the home in January of this year. To our knowledge, no excess coverage was approved by this board, however. Project, as originally proposed, would have increased impervious coverage on the lot to a total of 25.33% where 20% is permitted. As I noted, the applicants are now proposing to replace the existing swimming pool with a new pool, which would be larger relocated, reoriented. However, the surrounding area of the new pool, other than the coping, would be raised decking rather than concrete. As you know, raised decking with appropriate spacing between the planks does not count for coverage under your ordinance and is also not subject to the full rear yard setback. In this case, it would be 25 feet instead of 50, as long as we have open decking. The proposed reduction of the size of the driveway will also reduce the coverage. The net total proposed coverage is now 23.06, of which 648 square feet will be stormwater-neutral pool water surface area. If this water surface area were disregarded, coverage would only be 20.64, just slightly over the 20% that's permitted. Again, as Mr. Begg has just indicated, we have reoriented, reengineered a little bit in order to accomplish some of the goals brought up by him and his engineers. They will be discussed this evening by our engineer. The variance for excessive floor area in a single-family residence under Section 21-32.3 of his earning ordinance is a C-bulk variance as opposed to a D4 use variance for floor-area ratio. This was determined by the New Jersey Supreme Court in Rumsen Estates versus Mayor of Fair Havens, 177 NJ 338 in 2003. We are seeking approval of 4,568 square feet, where 3,364 square feet is permitted for this lot, based upon its width. While this is obviously a substantial excess mathematically, given the fact that the addition is mostly located behind the home and does not widen the home at all, it does not create a massive quote-unquote "monster" home such as floor-area limitations were designed to address. The Supreme Court in the Rumsen case defined "monster" homes as homes which are built to a scale completely out of keeping with the neighbors of the surrounding area. That's a quote. And which, quote, "fail to match the fabric of the neighborhood," end quote. I believe you will agree, we'll put testimony from our architect to show that that is simply not the case here. What we are proposing is well-in-keeping with this neighborhood and the homes on the cul-de-sac. This is an eight or nine, I believe nine, home cul-de-sac. We're going to show you pictures of each of the homes on the street, and you'll see that what we're proposing is well-in-keeping despite what the math shows in terms of a rear addition. Finally, we do need variances for everyone's favorite ordinance, 21-18.1, which in pertinent part requires a swimming pool to be located behind the rear building line of existing residential structures on adjoining lots. We need this regard to both lots, as I said, and in fact, those lots, I'll just cut to the chase, are equally deficient and non-compliant vis-a-vis our rear line. I have three witnesses this evening: applicant Lindsay Pedici, Corey Fernandez, our architect, and Robert Cunningham, our engineer. If there's no questions for me, we do have gifts, I'm going to take them, I think it's easier to hand them to you as we're going through the testimony, though, so we don't confuse with regard to exhibit numbers, so I just apologize in advance, it'll take some time as we pass things out as we go, we'll try to do it as quickly as we can.
I do have a question.
Sure.
You were talking about the floor area of the house.
Right.
Why are some houses in the neighborhood allowed more than this property limit?
Because it's based upon lot width.
Oh.
So, it's, you know, the, the basic concept, and the Supreme Court used the term "monster home," it's kind of helpful because it really tells you what they're getting. It's amassing from the street perspective, so it makes sense to go by the width, because if you're getting more and more wide, it's a more massive situation. Height could get involved, too.
And as for this development, when it was constructed, those were the rules that were going?
Right. The RC4 cluster zone is one of the few zones in the town that has a floor-area requirement. It's not common in the township, I don't know that it's common frankly in many. There's the one case talking about it, and there's not a whole body of case law, so I don't think it comes up that much. But it is considered a C variance, because it doesn't, it doesn't change the use. You're, you know, it's a single-family use, it is, no matter what, what it's focusing on is not having these massive monster homes on lots that don't warrant it.
So, there's a formula of how much area you're allowed based on the width of the lot?
It's instead of floor-area ratio, which is dividing the square footage by your lot area.
Right.
Floor area, under your ordinance, anyway, you divide it by the lot width.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay.
I have one question for, actually, I missed a slide, I just want to make sure. So, the proposed coverage is 23.06, that's the new proposed. Mr. Stein, is that a typo in your comment two where it says?
Yes, there is.
Not to call you out, but I-
This is 25.
The third line of comment two, that's five should be a three. The other numbers, I did check after you talked about that, the other numbers in that paragraph are 25.6.
Okay. Let's call you out, I just want to make sure that we're all following the numbers correctly. Thank you.
You said the third line of comment two?
Comment two.
Oh, comment two, wait, hold on.
Number two in that third line says the total proposed lot coverage of 25.06, it's 23.06.
Got it, okay. I didn't catch that either, okay.
Which matched the number you suggested.
Yes. All right, then, as I said, we have three witnesses, I'm going to have all three of you come up to be sworn in, and then we'll start with Lindsay.
Okay, so we'll get the three of you guys, and then our two board professionals, qualified, you can please raise your hands for me. You swear or affirm the testimony, you're all about to provide the truth, the whole truth, tell me what the truth is, what have you got?
I do.
Okay, I'll swear, Matt Scher.
Perfect, thank you.
Ms. Pedici, you have the place of honor.
Sorry, I guess it's been a little bit late for you.
That's okay.
Sorry, you're here.
I'm going to ask you a few preliminary questions, and then we're going to deviate from my normal practice a little bit. Ms. Pedici has put together a very nice narrative which tells you exactly why they're doing what they're doing, and I can't elicit that any better through questioning, so I just feel if it's okay with you, let her read it. But first, would you please just introduce yourself to the board?
Sure. I am Lindsay Pedici, and I will soon be residing at 21 Pittney Court.
And where do you reside currently?
Currently, I'm at 146 Linden Drive, also in Basking Ridge.
How long have you lived in Burris Township?
For, how long have I been married? Since 2012. This was, we first bought our home on Kensington Road, 25, 27 Kensington Road, and then, six years ago, bought our current home at 146 Linden Drive. I can't keep all the numbers correct.
And your design professionals will give us all the details of the architectural, engineering perspective, but just briefly, in your own words, what is it you're doing? What do you want to do with the property?
What we're looking to do is add a room off the back of the house and do a second floor on it as well, because on the second floor, we are looking to add a fifth bedroom. And design layout-wise, the best way to do that was breaking up our current master bedroom and relocating that to over the garage and then over the back room that will be built.
So, you have a two-story addition behind the garage?
Yes.
And then you're raising the garage area from one and a half stories to make it two?
Yes. Currently, it's a dormered ceiling over the garage, so we would just make it a full second floor.
Okay. And the big question is, why are we doing this? And you have a lot of answers to that, so I'm going to let you go ahead and tell the board.
Yes. Okay, perfect. I was a little nervous, and I can talk too much sometimes, so I wrote everything down, so I didn't get long-winded and off-topic. So, a little bit of background on why we're here tonight. So, moving to Prince Edward Point has always been a dream of mine, probably because it's reminiscent of the neighborhood I grew up in and must have been built by the same builders. I can go into a number of these homes, and I know exactly where the linen closets are, where the pantry is, either because it was the same layout that I grew up in or I babysat for children in. This neighborhood just simply feels like home to me, and it always has been. I joke that I stalked the neighborhood for the last 10 years until this house popped on and I had, my husband and I had to grab it. Luckily, he agreed with me that it was great, too. And this is exactly the place I want to be, and I feel most comfortable. While I feel like the winner in all of this, finding my dream home in my dream neighborhood, my three sons, Joseph, Louis, and Frankie, who are 11, 9, and 5 respectively, they're the real winners here. Where we currently live, there's only one family that lives across the street from us with elementary-aged kids. Now, I understand that people come and go. However, moving to Prince Edward Point brings them within walking distance to so many of their friends, with the DeAngelis and Dardanello families on Pittney, the Burkhold, Ziracho, Henchman, Sacco, and Press families on Spring House, Patroglias on Woods End around the corner, all the way down to the other end of the neighborhood with the Biscone and Moretti families on Edward, Merrilies and Mouchieri on Heath. The neighborhood is truly going to change my kids' lives. Having friends who live in such close proximity will foster a strong sense of community, security, and friendships that my boys will carry with them throughout their childhood. Prior to us even moving in, this neighborhood has already shown our family what a neighborhood truly is, welcoming us and including me specifically in a Prince Edward Point Moms Night Out, that was last week, with about 20 other moms throughout the entire neighborhood. Now, you might be wondering why we're here asking for this variance if we love this house and this neighborhood so much. And the answer is that while this move will benefit our family as a whole, we need to tweak a few things to accommodate our family dynamic. Our oldest son has behavior challenges that began when he was only in preschool, but luckily landed us in the PALS Integrated Preschool Program until he transitioned into the Behavior Disabilities Program that's now referred to as Bridges for Kindergarten at Cedar Hill School, hence why we moved from Kensington to Cedar Hill. We received tremendous support from the Bridges Program, assisting my husband and me in creating systems for our family outside of school to help keep Joseph regulated and in control of his body and emotions. Because of the nature of this meeting being a matter of public record, I don't feel very comfortable going into greater detail about his needs, like his diagnoses. He's currently mainstreamed in the special, in the general education classroom, aside from the additional reading support that he receives, and participates in mainstream activities in town, like the baseball program at RBC and St. James's basketball. Because Joe's disability is invisible or hidden, meaning you wouldn't be able to see it by looking at him and know he has a disability upon meeting him, many of his friends aren't even aware of his challenges, so I don't really feel like it's right for me to share that here in an open forum. However, what I can tell you is that when Joe entered kindergarten, my neighbor at the time introduced me to the local organization for special education families in our town called Bernard's Parents for Exceptional Children, and that became a lifeline for me. For those of you who don't know about PEC, this is a local nonprofit that supports special education families in our town by providing programs, events, and education opportunities to connect and empower the special education families. Through this organization, I really found my tribe, I found the people I can be vulnerable with and that I can lean on, and meeting other parents who are in similar situations with their children and having similar struggles at home really helped my husband and I make it through some tough years. I decided to get more involved with PEC and give back because it had meant so much to me and I had gotten so much out of it. And this summer, I'll be starting my fourth year as co-president of Bernard's PEC, supporting all those families who are just starting out on this journey, and giving them the advocacy and encouragement that they need, whether they're just beginning or that they're currently in the trenches and need a hand to lift them out. Now, how will this variance accommodate our family dynamic? You'll see in our architect's drawings, which Corey will go into, we're looking to build a room off the kitchen on the first floor that will act as a billiards room, as well as to reconfigure our second floor adding a fifth bedroom. Why the billiards room? In our current home, we have a first-floor great room that we made into, decorated, and use as a billiards room because of my husband's love for playing pool and teaching our children how to play. In recent years, my oldest son, Joe, has taken over the room as his space, my husband's not too thrilled, but that's okay, and he uses this room to reset and regroup himself when he's overstimulated by too much noise or commotion, to decompress after a long day, whether that, whether he needs, or whether he, when he needs to separate from his brothers. Whether he plays pool or simply colors to calm and reset himself, he values having the space, and quite frankly, so do we. My hope is to replicate this room in our new home on Pittney, down to painting it Benjamin Moore Cottage Red, and bringing over the pool table, chess table, and his favorite recliner. Why the fifth bedroom? Our biggest obstacle with our son's behavior is the unpredictability and intensity of his emotions and reactions. About six years ago, we began hiring after-school, began hiring high school or college students to help after-school because of this. I needed to make sure I had someone to keep Louis and Frankie occupied, my two younger ones, and playing when I had to attend to Joe's needs. For this reason, I need similar support from my parents when my husband travels for business. For example, just last month, I was insanely grateful to have my parents staying with us for the one night that my husband had to travel to Atlanta. You might wonder what my 67-year-old parents can help with. First, my mother's incredible, she could probably take down Joe if she needed to. However, having them at the house as another adult to watch over me as I dealt with Joe was the comforting part. Joe is my job, and my mom is my support. As I was addressing Joe and his behavior, my mom listened from the hallway, making sure things didn't escalate, and she didn't need to call anyone. She made sure Louis was comfortable and not afraid as he stayed locked in the playroom for most of the afternoon. She picked up Frankie from preschool so I could stay at the house with Joe to make sure he didn't do anything destructive to himself or the house. My parents live down the shore and therefore need somewhere to sleep every time my husband is away. Additionally, my father has Parkinson's disease and needs a substantial bed to sleep in as opposed to doing just a Daybed or a Murphy Bed. It's progressed to the point that he now needs help buttoning his shirt, putting on his belt, and pulling his shirt over his head, therefore, he unfortunately can't stay home alone when my mom comes up to stay with me and help me. I just want to thank you for allowing me to share our family's story tonight. The variance we're requesting isn't merely a structural change, it's about creating an environment where my sons can thrive and grow within this nurturing community. Our vision for the added space is woven through the needs of our family, particularly for Joseph, who requires understanding and care. As we embrace this new chapter in Prince Edward Point, we believe that these modifications will not only support Joe's unique needs, but also enhance the quality of life for all of my kids. I hope you'll consider our request thoughtfully, as it allows us to build not just a home, but a true home where our family can flourish. Thank you for your attention and support.
I'm going to follow up to that with any questions.
Other questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Corey, you're up.
Good evening. You've already been sworn in, would you please give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Sure. I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey, also in New York. I went to college here in New Jersey, at NGIT, graduated in 2013. I opened up my company in 2016, which is Total Architecture. I am the owner of the company, I am also the architect that drew the plans and worked with the Pedici's to develop the plans, and my license is in good standing.
Have you testified before boards before?
Yes, I have testified before this board about a year ago and other neighboring communities.
Welcome back.
Appreciate it.
Accepted as an architect, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez, would you first start by just taking us through, I, we'll get into the neighborhood later, if that's okay?
Sure.
If you take us through the plan, the basic concept, and then we can relate that to the neighborhood.
Sure. Soon as I learn how to use the screen.
It's not a touch one, but it works just like, here's where we chose.
I appreciate it, okay. Thank you.
If you would, start by describing the house as it is currently and then how it'll morph if the project is completed.
Sure. I'm going to skip over this first page, this was submitted as part of the first meeting, but Mr. Cunningham has taken over the design on this site plan work. So, what we're looking at here is three sets of plans on this page. Okay, so zoom in. The top left is the existing first-floor plan. So, similar to other houses on this block, and we'll kind of get into it, there's this certain prototype, and then there's upgrades to that prototype. So, the standard house is this rectangle here, which is a two-story colonial-style house. Directly adjacent to that is a two-car garage. Quite often, it's one and a half stories, sometimes it's two stories with usable space on top. And then, the eating kitchen and family room, we see here at the top, are, sorry to give us whiplash here, are kind of extensions to the initial prototype. Okay? And what we're looking at here in the first-floor plan is the expansion. So, everything you see here, kind of a gray line, is existing, and what you see in the pochade-filled wall is what's proposed. So, what's proposed on the first floor is a billiards room that's approximately 24 and a half feet by 21 and a half feet.
Ms. Fernandez, I'm sorry, Mr. Fernandez, what's the last revised date of these plans?
These plans were revised 5/20/25.
Other than the first page, which has been eliminated, these plans have not changed since the initial submission, right? Only the engineering plans have changed.
Oh, okay.
Correct. Only A101 has been resubmitted with the update of 5/20/25. All of the other plans will remain at 2/6/25 as the drawings that were submitted to the board.
I got you, I'm just making sure I'm on the right one here, thank you.
Sure.
So, I missed scope, I'm sorry. So, A101-
A101.
-has been revised, but not the rest of the set?
Correct. Just A101. What was, what has been revised on A101 from the original submission is the basement plan, which was added, which has been clouded in this drawing. So, taking a look at the basement plan, we'll see that the new billiards room is proposed over a slab on grade, so that's no crawl space, no basement underneath, slab, more or less at the existing grade. And then, to the right, we'll see a proposed basement walkout, which is a stair that goes from the basement to the ground level outside, which is part of a outdoor pool and deck Okay, taking us to the second floor, the top left is the existing floor plan, so we can see that kind of rectangle, which is the main house here, and then to the left is, right now, currently usable space over the garage. We call it a half-story, it's a dormered space, meaning they're taking space and using it in the attic. So, as you get to the edges, you'll see a sloping ceiling. So, you get the same floor area out of it, but you get less head height as you approach the edges. And what that consists of is an existing primary bedroom, existing bath, and walk-in closet, which serves the primary bedroom. Okay, the proposal takes that primary bedroom, turns that into a guest room, which is a fifth room for the house, and a laundry room to serve the second floor, and then the new primary bedroom entree is constructed over the garage and then over the proposed billiards room at the back of the house. Okay, and what we're looking at here is the east or the front elevation.
So, over the billiards room is the two walk-in closets, or what is the, what is over the billiards room? I'm just curious, what's that mean?
So, the billiards room on this drawing would be right even with this wall here. So, it's half of the bathroom and the walk-in closets.
Okay, so those are two closets right there.
Those are closets, yes, the his-and-hers closet, yep. Okay, so, looking at the east elevation, the way these drawings are read is that anything that's not filled in with a material is existing, right? So, this is the existing two-story portion of the house, this is the existing garage below, and then what you see where we hatch in and we draw in the lines of the material, that is the proposed. So, this section up here is the proposed- So this section up here is the proposed addition over the garage. And that's the front elevation, what's seen from Pitney Court. Okay, the side elevation, which is the current garage, you can see the current garage is here, which existing, remains as existing, and then this is the addition over the garage, and then this lower portion is the billiards room, and the portion above is the closets and bathrooms that serve the entree. And then this roof plan we're looking at shows all of the existing construction of the roof and then the added portions of the roof.
The roof height at the peak of the new addition is still lower than the peak of the main house, is that correct?
Correct. We can see that in the east elevation and south elevation, where the existing peak is here and the new peak is approximately two foot below.
Is there any change whatsoever in the proposed width of the home?
The, the frontage of the home that faces Pitney Court remains the same. Just to elaborate that through the drawing, so this would be the existing front of the home from here, this line to this line, and the proposal does not change that.
Visually, it looks like a bigger home.
Visually, this is a half-story now with three dormers, and now it's a full-story.
Right now, it looked like a house in a smaller part. Now it looks like one big house.
Well, yeah, we're going to show some photos that kind of represent.
That's what it looks like visually. It's a larger home.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. It looks like a garage before.
Right.
Yeah, with dormers on it.
The width is the same.
The width is the same, yeah.
Same, but.
I think when we show some other photos on the street, it'll help explain.
Yeah.
And we're looking at the side elevation here, so north elevation, you don't really see too many changes. This is the roof line beyond, and then the rear elevation, we're looking at the existing home to remain and the billiards room and space above. Okay? And that's it for the architectural drawings.
So what were the changes that the neighbor requested? Was that? Oh, that's all engineering? Drainage? Oh, drainage, okay. Engineering, drainage. So as promised, we have presence. Should I give the originals to Ms. Kiefer? Would that be the best way to do that?
Yeah, do you have copies for everybody?
I do.
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
Exhibit one, exhibit one. So we're going to have.
How many exhibits are we going to have, Brad?
One up to here. I reverted to litigation, apparently, and did PA and PB, which would be plaintiff. So how about? Thirty years of practice I don't think I've ever done. Alzheimer's is suffering. Ms. Fernandez, I'm going to hand you and the board, it's marked for identification as exhibits A1, A2, and A3.
Okay.
Why don't I'm handing them out. Why don't you start with A1 and tell the board what it is?
Okay, exhibit A1 is a Google Maps aerial of the applicant's block, twenty-one, Pitney Court, rather, and portions of Spring House Lane, and it has the tax map overlaid on it. That's fine.
Okay. You guys see this? Yeah. Just again, A1 is the large map. A2 is the set of photos, and A3 is the tax assessment records.
Agreed.
Tom, did you guys get copies of A2 and A3?
No, I didn't get that.
We've got some extras. Did you run out? We've got some extras. We need two more. So, Mr. Fernandez, A1 essentially is to just kind of show the layout and show the relationship of this home to the homes in the surrounding cul-de-sac. Is that correct?
Correct.
And also gives us a little bit of a bird's eye in terms of the floor plan size, footprints of each of the homes on the neighborhood.
Agreed.
And then what I'm going to ask you to do is go through the photographs of A2, just so we don't get lost. They are all labeled in terms of what homes we're actually dealing with. But as you're going through the photographs, that would be the time to show the board, you know, how these homes compare to the subject home.
Sure.
And specifically from a massing perspective.
I can do that. So I'm going to take you through the first four, five sheets, which is the applicant's home. So this is 21 Pitney Court, the applicant's new residence. And photo A, we're looking at the front, so we can see that first prototype I really spoke about. So the right portion of this photo is that two-story colonial, and then the left half, left portion of that home is the one and a half-story garage with two dormer windows over it. So pay attention to that kind of massing strategy because we're going to see it over and over again on this block. So photo B is looking down the driveway. This photo would be the perspective that you would see some of the new addition going towards the back of the home. Photo C is the back of the home. I think what's important about this is that the proposal is a much more attractive solution than the existing because that dormer just has no relationship with any other part of the home. It looks like it just was kind of stuck on there. So I think the proposed rear elevation has been greatly improved, and photo D just further elaborates on that. Photo E is the picture of a shed and a tree on the property, and I believe this tree will be under Mr. Cunningham's testimony. It may, I think, have to be taken down to install the dry well. Okay, so when we flip to 1 Pitney Court, lot 17, I think this is the best example of the base prototype of this home. It's basically as bare as it comes in terms of, it's a two-story colonial home, regular gable roof on that, and then the one and a half-story garage to the left. And no bells and whistles on this one. We flip one page to 11 Pitney Court, same home, but now we see three dormers on top of the, the house proper, and we see two dormers on top of the garage. Same home, but the massing appears a little bit larger because it has some additional architectural elements. Still, within the context of the neighborhood, there's only nine houses on this block. This is one of them. 15 Pitney Court, same prototype. We see the house, the two-story house, this, the garage is on the left. Now, this home has had an addition on the right-hand side, so that lower portion, those three windows, is all an addition above and beyond the original prototype of the home in the community. So this would be more mass facing the street than the applicant's, but still in context of the neighborhood. If we flip again and we look at lot 23 Pitney Court, lot 13, this is hard to see, but this is still the same home. If you count the five windows in the front, that's the two-story colonial proper. This just has a large front portico built on it, so it's kind of obscure from the, what we saw at 1 Pitney Court. But we can also take a look at the right and the left. So on the left, we have the garage, the two lower windows behind that tree, which I believe is still one and a half stories, but on the right, we have a two-story addition that, once again, is more than the applicant frontage when it comes to a relationship of the frontage to the street.
So 23 Pitney, let's just stop at that one. So they expanded the same way we did with the two-story addition, but it actually made the home wider as opposed to being strictly behind the property as ours.
Correct. It makes the home wider, and in terms of massing, what's visible from the street, visible from the neighborhood, there's more mass there. And 24 Pitney Court, once again, this is the same home. It's, you can see the, the five windows in the front, two-story colonial. The garage on the left looks longer. It's got three windows instead of two, so it looks like that was built a little bit wider, probably to the, the owner's requirements for deeper garage. We can also see the two-story addition on the right, which is an expansion of the original prototype and more frontage than we are proposing as part of our project. And then when we get to the end, 20 Pitney Court, this is directly across the street from the applicant's, and I don't think this is the original prototype. It's hard to see if that was ever in there. I think this is a different style home, but we can see it is much more of a massive proposal than the applicant is proposing for the project.
And in addition to the larger massing of the home, they also have a two-car detached garage visible from the street, not behind the house.
Agreed.
So that home seems to be the largest, but it's only about five hundred square feet more than the applicant's current square footage. That's in the, thirty-eight fifty for that one?
Correct. I, I think what you're going to see inside the house is a lot of two-story spaces. So when you count floor area, you only count the floor you can actually walk on, right? So if I have a large two-story space with vaulted ceilings, then that doesn't count as floor area for the second floor.
Ms. Fernandez, in your professional opinion, when we're dealing with this issue of quote-unquote monster homes and massing, and obviously, since it's based upon width, it's the street perspective that's of utmost concern, is the fact that it's a two-story inner space versus a one-story, does that make any difference in terms of the appearance from the street and the massing effect?
No, no, I think it's arbitrary. I think it's how it's designed. If you design the home in such a way to avoid a lot of massing facing the street, then you can be successful at that with a large area at the same time.
So the fact, as Mr. Kraus pointed out, that the floor areas between the two homes are not that different, from a massing perspective, it's, it's a great difference. The floor area is just based upon the fact that it's separate floors interior.
Correct.
They went this way versus?
Yes. They went wider rather than back, and they probably, most likely have two-story spaces. When I take a look at that window above the front door, that's a two-story foyer, right? So that, I don't count the area on the second floor there.
And they have variable heights of the different areas of the sections of the house.
Yeah, and those two large windows flanking the chimney, my guess is that's also a double-height space.
Is it fair to say that, assuming that that's the case, that if those areas were in fact two stories, the floor area would be much, much greater than the house reflects?
Yeah, I think that's a safe presumption. Then going to 10 Pitney Court, same prototype, home on the, the home proper, the garage to the right with two dormers, and then a two-story addition to the left.
Again, to the left and visible from the street, changing the width of the home as opposed to behind like ours.
Correct. And 2 Pitney Court is just sort of the odd man out. It's not part of the original prototype. It's, it's completely different than all the other houses on the street. You know, if I had to take a guess, it's probably wider of a home than 21 Pitney, but that's hearsay.
I can see the square footage has got to go somewhere.
Yeah.
Before you guys go in for the, just for housekeeping purposes, so exhibit A2, that is a compendium of photographs of property and surrounding properties, thirteen pages, and then, and what exhibit A3 is this highlighted residential property assessment data?
Correct.
Do we have a source for it?
The tax assessment office from the Township website.
Got you, thank you.
Mrs. Ellie, is this a good time to stop? Because it doesn't sound like we're going to finish this application tonight, unfortunately. I'm just mindful of the time. We're past ten-thirty here.
Let's finish, Mr. Fernandez, which we're probably close to doing.
Okay, we're close to finishing his testimony?
I mean, I, I would ask the board to indulge us, and I think Mr. Cunningham can be fairly quick since we don't have Mr. Bay challenging unless Mr. Quinn has issues that we tend to delay.
I don't have any issue. I mean, I'll explain my position, but I don't have any issues with what I've seen.
And I think the engineering can be extremely quick.
How much time do you think you need? I'll pull the board. I, I don't like to go past ten-thirty when we don't have to. It's been a long year, I think.
I, I think I can finish, Mr. Fernandez, in five minutes.
I don't want to rush you. I just want to ask you how much time.
No, 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 it's, it's important to us to try to finish, obviously, and then I, but I certainly respect your time. Mr. Cunningham, do you think you can go through your plans in ten minutes?
Yes.
And I don't need to recall Ms. Pidich for anything, I don't believe.
Okay, let me just check quickly with the board. No judgment on, on your opinion, because obviously, we want to make sure that the board is engaged and paying attention and stuff. So I'm going to ask the board yes or no whether they want to stay for an additional?
Twenty.
Twenty-five minutes. No judgment? Yes means?
I was going to say, I think we should be able to finish by now.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms.?
Yeah, I know.
Come on, question.
I know. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not going to pull the board. We're not going to have enough time, unfortunately, today, because I don't, I don't want to rush the board either in terms of being able to listen and hear questions, and we have a lot of data in front of us, which is super helpful, and we really appreciate seeing it like this, but we also need to digest it, and at the same time, we didn't have it before tonight, so we don't have our questions kind of preset to some extent, so I'd like to, I think, how much time do you need with?
I, I think we're just about done. That's why I was suggesting.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll give it another five minutes for, for this testimony. If we can wrap it up, we can, otherwise, we're going to have to carry it, okay? So I'll ask the board for five minutes to see if we can finish this witness. We'll carry the case to the, to the next meeting.
Ms. Chair, can I just ask the procedural question?
Yes.
In order for, we carry this over to the next meeting, what's the requirements in terms of who needs to be available at the next meeting to note all this? I personally will not be able to make July meeting.
Okay. Well, this is a C variant, so technically, we would, you know, okay, so.
Only four, four board members.
Okay. We would only need four. I, I assume we'll be able to seat that for you?
You could ask Ms. Pidich to review the tape.
Right.
If she wants to.
If she wants to. Okay. So.
If it's on her table, she wants it.
Okay. So I'll ask the board to stay for five minutes and see if we can wrap up this testimony so that perhaps you don't have to come back.
Okay.
And then we'll carry the case to the next meeting.
See, I just want to make sure I gave my client the right answer, but typically, we would be the first at the next meeting. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I haven't looked at the schedule.
We're, our only concern is if it ends up being multi-applicant. We don't want to end up in the same spot.
We appreciate that. Ms. Kiefer, is that something we can accommodate to move them first to continue? them first to, to continue, uh, the application?
We only have, technically, we've got three on for July 9th. Okay?
Does that include the one that we carried tonight?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, they said they're going to make it July 9th.
So, that would be four.
Okay, we'll put you first. We'll put you first.
Thank you.
Do we, would we need an extension of time, Mr. Charlie?
Uh... If you do, I'll certainly provide it. That's not...
Okay, thank you.
Your extension, yeah, your time to act is July 27th.
Okay, so what time?
We should be okay. Okay. Mrs. Elliott, want to continue with this witness?
I will. Mr. Fernandez, in your professional opinion, I'm going to say again the definition given to us by Rumsen. In your professional opinion, uh, would our home, uh, the applicant's home as modified, uh, would it be built to a scale completely out of keeping with the homes in the surrounding area?
No.
Do you in fact believe, in your professional opinion, that it would be in keeping with the homes that you've just described on this cul-de-sac?
I do.
Uh, and do you feel that the proposal would create a home that would, quote, fail to match the fabric of the neighborhood, end quote?
No.
In fact, do you believe that it would be consistent with the fabric of the neighborhood?
I do.
And just to confirm, despite the, uh, floor area that's shown on the tax assessors' uh, information with regard primarily to the house across the street, but a couple of the other larger homes on the cul-de-sac, uh, is it your professional opinion that the massing and the quote-unquote monster home effect, uh, would be more so for those homes, albeit not at all in the statehood, than the home that's being proposed? Stated another way, are they more massive than what we're proposing?
From the street perspective, yes.
I don't think I have any other questions for Mr. Fernandez.
Can I just ask, what, what is the definition of frontage? Your fourth column there. On A3.
So, typically, frontage is measured at the street, the, literally the front line of the property, as opposed to lot width, which is measured at the front line of the building of the homes.
Okay.
And in this neighborhood, they are different, uh, because sometimes they taper, as you can see from the aerial.
Okay, so that's completely on the street level across.
The frontage is at the street level and the building width, which is, or the lot width, which is what we have to take into account here is at the building level.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for this witness? Okay. Does the public have any questions for this witness?
One question.
Oh, great. Hang on one sec. We have one more question.
Just one simple question is, um, this neighborhood is very tight. The houses are very tight, you know, within this block and the three or four blocks of this large neighborhood, where, um, neighbors behind, they're very close to. I mean, visually, it doesn't look like it, but you, you drive this neighborhood, you can kind of see the house behind. And there's no, you know, fences, not a lot of, you know, uh, while there's a lot of trees, they're, they're still pretty fairly small, right? Does that bear the impact, make any, you know, does that, does that matter at all, the, the way that they're, this house is going to be built? Maybe not in the front, but back this way, where someone behind is going to go, wow, we got a big house in front of, you know, behind me now. Or visually, from the neighbor saying, oh, I don't, you know, the front doesn't look different, but the side now is different, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen ordinances which restrict, like, side massing, which would be, all right, your house can be 25 foot, and then it has to step a minimum of two feet. This township doesn't have one, but that's to restrict side massing. I've never seen any restrictions for rear massing, other than what would be a rear yard setback. And this house does meet the rear yard setback. I would also say that the Algonquin Gas Pipeline easement is behind the house, so they have a pretty wide easement between them and the properties on the backside, which is all tree-lined.
Okay. Any other houses that you were looking at, do they have a larger, I'll say, depth to them, or were they all, uh, what call it, frontage?
Well, I would say, um, exhibit A1 would probably be the best image to look at there. And you can see that, uh, in terms of, even if you take the one across the street with the very wide massing, you can see it's got very deep massing as well. If you compare that to across the street, 21 Pittney, just scaling with your eyes and your fingers, you can see they're relatively...
So, it would be more similar to the one across the street from, uh, uh, the massing behind versus massing in front?
Depth, but, all right, if you take a look, uh, go two to the left of 21 Pittney, uh, with the pool in the backyard, .99 acres, Lot 16, you can see that portion of the home that goes back towards the pool, probably extends further than our proposal, or, or similar.
Thank you.
Sure.
And, Mr. Schley, can I ask you the, the in, the intent of maximum floor area in this, um, in this zone? What is the intent to, to having a maximum?
Well, based on the fact that it is based on the width, as you know, you pointed out, it would be, it would be more about views from the street. Um, although, the actual width of the house is not regulated, um, the area is regulated, so you're kind of, you're basing it on the width of the lot, but you could make, as we've seen in some of the photos, houses that look wider, um, but don't have the amount of, there's much floor area. Uh, those wider houses presumably are the ones that don't have the full two stories across that full width. So, and, and I've said this before, I was at an issue with the way the ordinance is structured in that it doesn't take account for those cathedral ceilings, the two levels, and it also, uh, doesn't count garage space. So, you could have a six-car garage, as long as you have coverage and setbacks, and, uh, those two issues, the, uh, the two-story indoor heights and, and the, uh, the amount of garage space you have can significantly affect that. So, I don't, I don't think, I think the ordinance could be adjusted a lot better. I think the intent being based on the width versus being based on lot area, um, it, it is more geared toward, uh, how much mass that you see from the street, whether it be width or height, just that elevation view, um, of, of massing.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions from the board?
So, I'm going to throw out a question, um, that can maybe be addressed next time. I still look at this as we're over an impervious coverage, and I look at the size of the billiard room and the size of the, the rooms going above the, um, garage and billiard room, and I have to wonder and have to ask the question, is there a way to scale it back just a little bit, um, so that it, that, so that the massing, um, and the impervious coverage just isn't, quite what it is being presented as?
We can look at that. I, I, you're already taking into account the pool water?
I am.
Okay. So, we're very close to the 20 once we, if we disregard that. Okay.
Thank you. You don't need to answer that now, but I see there's a question out there. I think there was another, uh, any other questions from the board? Okay, I think there was a question from the public. Thank you.
The title is on 172 Riverside Drive. Um, the guest room is on the second floor?
Correct.
And the master bedroom's on the second floor?
Correct.
And the three boys' bedrooms, they're on the first floor, I guess?
Second floor.
Second, everything's on the second floor.
Correct.
Is the house going to be ADA compliant? Meaning, the doorways will be wide enough for wheelchairs or the hallways, the toilets and stuff?
No.
No.
ADA does not, um, is not required in single-family homes.
Not a problem. We'll, we'll reach this next time.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Elliott, that might be a good place for us to stop then.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, this matter is going to be carried to the boards, what, it's July 2nd?
July 9th.
July 9th, my fault.
Yeah.
All right, it's the holiday, my fault. Okay, so, the application of John Lindsay Piniucci concerning a property located at Block 5502, Lot 14, 21 Pittney Court will be carried to the board's, uh, July 9th, 2025 meeting, 7:30 PM here at the municipal building on, uh, Collier, Collier Lane, right? That's it. Um, no further notice will be required other by publication or by certified mail. This announcement constitutes, uh, notice of the continuation to the July 9th hearing date, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, can I make one quick request? Why don't I mark the remaining two exhibits and give them to you?
Sure.
And then we...
Yes. We'd rather have them.
I rescind what I just said, and I will repeat it later.
Give them tonight than the, uh, Ms. Keeper or her replacements. I'll need to mail them to you or do them.
So, this is exhibit A4. This is a compendium of colorized 3D renderings?
Yes, six pages, I believe.
Six pages dated, uh, today?
I don't know if they are dated, so we can date it. We'll date the exhibit today. Sure.
Six pages, six, twenty-five, okay. And then exhibit A5, this is a proposed residence addition and site, oh, I'm sorry, grading and drainage plan, heard by Cunningham Engineering and Design LLC, dated June 4th, 2025. Okay. Any other ready to say this, Mr. Zelt?
No.
Okay. With that, I will repeat what I said before. This matter will be carried to the board's July 9th, 2025 meeting, 7:30 PM here in the municipal building. Uh, no further notice will be required other by publication or by mail. This announcement constitutes your notice of the continuation of the July 9th meeting. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening, happy 4th of July.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Elliott. Time to you. Um, number seven on the agenda, we're going to carry that to the next meeting. That's the 2024, um, annual report and recommendations. Is that okay? Hmm.
You got three minutes.
It's really tough to sum it up in five minutes. I believe you keep learning that. Okay, um, comments from members? I think we're going to cancel our next meeting, our, um, uh, the June, yeah, the June 12th meeting. We're going to cancel that one. Ms. Keeper, any other comments from members?
Missy Cindy?
Yeah, we, Cindy, thank you so much. I mean, seriously, it's been a pleasure to work with you and, um, you know, all the calls and support that you've given us. There's no doubt that you made us all better, uh, at our job, so we thank you. We're going to miss you.
Well, thank you. I just want to say that it is also been a pleasure working with you. You all work very hard at what you do, and you're always so efficient and so prepared for every application that comes along. It is, the township is truly blessed to have such dedicated members.
Thank you. I agree with that. I agree with that. Thank you very much, and, um, welcome, Joanne, hopefully.
Yeah, thanks, you said.
Oh, yeah. Hopefully, we didn't scare you off.
She's still sitting here.
Hopefully, yeah, it's true. That's a good point. That's a good point. Um, Cindy, we also, um, have a card and a gift from you, and that's from all the board and the board professionals, so thank you so much, and we'll leave this at the end. Um, any comments from staff?
Just again, Cindy, best of luck. Pleasure working with you. Like I was saying at the beginning, the best in the business as far as board secretaries go, and wide boards,
truth thing. That is truth, truth, truth. Okay, motion to your adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.